Oops, I see all of our commissioners present in the waiting room.
Yeah, if we can hold for just a couple of minutes, my live stream is having some trouble.
Of course. I just wasn't sure why we were holding.
So I'm gonna let everyone in, but I need like two minutes if you could let them know that we need to hold real quick.
Okay, thank you. I just shot them all emails to tell them why they were not there yet.
Yeah, good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Craig. Um, we're still waiting for a couple of people, a couple of the commissioners to add video. But we will be waiting for a moment before starting the meeting because we're having some live stream issues at the moment. We're expected to start within two to three minutes, but we will wait for Alex's go ahead before we actually start opening the meeting.
Okay, hey Dennis.
Evening.
Hi.
Hi, Mark. I don't know if you heard that, but we are going to pause for a minute or two while we're dealing with some live stream issues.
Yeah, I did. Thank you. I couldn't quite, I couldn't get my video or audio up for a minute, so.
Yeah, me too.
Me too.
I'm gonna go back on mute because I know my dog's gonna start barking any second when my wife walks in the door.
That would do it.
Did anyone else have a power outage on Saturday night?
Not that I know of.
Because we were away, but we came home to evidence that had been out and a notice from Edison saying your power is back on. And I don't know what happened.
We did have a wind event on Saturday, so it's likely caused by that. Um, as far as I know, there are no current outages in the city. But I have that URL handy to check if we need to.
Good.
I'm gonna go ahead and kill my video, but Alex will come on and let us know when it's time for us to begin, you know, on here.
We do. See Jessica or Senior Planner Thompson is back.
I think he might have meant to say Bob it, but it takes a little while for our names to change.
Name change here.
Well, I think she's also hiding from her husband's emails. There is a clear and present danger for her.
So congratulations again, Jessica.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And congrats again to you, Dennis, on your son's wedding on the same day.
Lot of fun.
The pictures were beautiful.
Eleven eleven twenty-two and the ceremony started at four forty-four exactly.
Wow, I got that dialed in.
Yeah, kids these days.
So what, what aren't we able to stream right now?
I believe the answer to that is this meeting.
We're all in this room together and no one can watch us. Is that the concept here?
I believe that we're not available to the public on YouTube yet. That's my understanding of what would be the live stream technical issue. And I believe they're too busy trying to fix it to tell us.
Well, pretty soon we'll all be in the same room, so we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
Do we know when that's happening?
They expected it to be a very brief delay. If it extends much longer, I am sure that somebody will pop in to update us.
No, Mark is wondering about live meetings.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean in person, seeing your face? Uh, there's no word on that yet.
Ask Governor Newsom.
It seems like we just keep getting these sort of pulses of, of pandemic that kind of come and go.
So does the flow.
Yeah, yeah.
Every time that they start talking about reopening for face to face, we get another spike. So I, I'm not sure since we're entering the the season for it, wow, what the protocol will be.
True.
I am the City Hall's token face mask wearer. And Purell Beather. But I have not yet had COVID.
I hope you have your shots.
Of course. I'm a firm believer in science.
A doctor's kid, I have no choice.
Science requires no belief.
I'm not sure that that's true.
Here we go.
Just, you know, pump the brakes on anytime.
Just trying to be provocative.
You have a nap.
Oh, thanks.
God, more wind on Thursday. Geez.
Uh, I know, I'm hoping that we'll still have the ability to use an oven on Thanksgiving Day, or I'm gonna have a lot of sad folks at my house.
Well, in twenty thirty, you're not gonna be allowed to use gas. Get out your electric bill.
Well, my cooktop is gas. But I think I could make do with an oven.
Wind here, wind here in Big Rock doesn't look bad on Thursday. Peaks of seventeen miles per hour. Hey, a sprinkling of rain next Monday, maybe.
I'd be more excited if it weren't for that Malibu Canyon Road.
So all these people with whose names are on the screens we're looking at cannot see us right now. Is this correct, Rebecca?
I believe the people that are present in the Zoom meeting are viewing you. I believe what we're waiting for is the ability for residents of Malibu who typically watch on the Malibu's TV station uh, for them to be able to view the meeting. I am emailing in the background to see if Parker or Alex have any kind of update for us.
Um, I was actually gonna chime in as soon as you were done. Um, I don't seem to be able to get the stream running. Uh, how does Patrick feel about that? Can we go? We are recording, we are on Zoom, people are in the meeting, everything's good. I just can't get it on Channel Three or YouTube currently.
So are those the only two kind of other live streamed, i.e. we have, the members of the public have three options to view it. They can come to Zoom, they can go to YouTube, or they can go on Channel Three?
Yes.
Got it. Now is there, do we have any mechanism to post? I understand that you can't stream. Can you post something on the, either the YouTube channel or Channel Three? That basically can be short saying, due to technical difficulties, you cannot stream the meeting on this platform, please log into Zoom at throw the link up. Is that a possibility or, or no?
Yeah, we can do something like that and, and in the meantime, in the next couple of minutes.
Okay, so, so, you know, the, obviously the transparency and access is, it is paramount. Those two, and this is my take, it's kind of up to the discretion of the chair, uh, that those two are, are, are view kind of only that we are gonna record it, so nothing's gonna be done in secret. And, and, and more importantly, not more importantly, but one factor to consider is that the people who view it via those mediums, they can't participate through it. You can't raise your hand on, on YouTube, you can't comment via your television. If you wanted to comment, if you wanted to participate, you would be in the Zoom or you could call in. Um, so I think I would, you know, from a, from a purely legal due process standpoint, I, I do believe it's, it's, it's potentially okay to proceed. Um, but I would at least advise to allow the, the, the people to at least post that on the, on the YouTube and cable channels before we get going. And I see some hands are raised, so, so Chair Smith.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Well, quite a few people that I know watch it on YouTube because they can go back and forth waiting for their item to come up. And they won't have any way to know their items coming up. So that is one problem I can think of. Especially when speakers are gonna give minutes, speakers, et cetera.
Mr. Hill.
Yeah, I mean, I'm agnostic on this. We're gonna have the meeting sooner or later anyway. So one thing I'd just point out is that there was recently several times there have been council meetings where they've had to cancel it because there was a power outage somewhere else in the city, even though the meeting could be held, they decided to cancel it because some people couldn't watch it. So I don't know, maybe this is different because people can, could still theoretically zoom in if they have, if they have power. I don't know.
And, and, and so typically that's kind of the the, the key, at least concern from my point of view is someone with something to say wants to say it and due to the tech, due to the technical problems, we cannot hear them. That would be something I would throw myself in front of and say, nope, we cannot have this, you know, people have to be able to comment, they have to be able to participate, et cetera. As I said, those other mediums notwithstanding, you know, Vice Chair Mazza's point is, is well taken that, hey, maybe someone has it on in the background, it's easier to put the TV on and, and stare at your, uh, Zoom screen. They see it's on, it's two items before, okay, I'm gonna go log into Zoom, that point's well taken. Um, and so, you know, if we want to post it on the, on those mediums, i.e. hey, due to technical difficulties, it is going, it, it is gonna be recorded, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and so that's, you know, something to, to, to keep in mind.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes. Any thoughts here? I have a cold, so I'm willing to put it off for as long as it takes.
I'm just.
I don't care. I'm, I'm fine. I'm here in my office dialed in.
Is there any basis to sort of parse the agenda and say, these things would be fine to do, you know, undercover darkness and these other things we should wait? I don't know.
I don't, I mean, that, that, that's, there's, there's nothing there. It's either, you know, as I said before, these, the, the, you know, the brown act, what we're most concerned about is the ability to participate. This is the sole mechanism for what I can tell, excuse me, as well as calling in, which I believe Richard or, or, or someone from staff, that is still available. You can still zoom in. And should you be on the phone, I guess it's the same thing when you're on your phone calling into Zoom, that's still a viable mechanism. Uh, but once again, there is a kind of, you know, overarching, hey, streaming was down, someone couldn't watch it, et cetera, et cetera factor that we do kind of need to need to consider. And that's why I, I did float that idea of at least giving them time to post it on those things. So at the very least, someone turns their TV on, you know, echoing what Vice Chair Mazza's good point was about, hey, I, this is how I view the meeting, and then I jump in, it says, we're having the meeting, but, you know, we're, we, we, due to technical difficulties, we can't stream it on this one, please log in Zoom, that should give them plenty of time to then, okay, get on their computer and bring it up that way. Or call.
Has Alex been able to post that yet?
I believe that Parker and Alex were waiting for a decision by this body as to whether you wanted them to post that information. But they can do so very quickly.
My opinion is we should do it and let's move on.
Yeah, is there any way to document that we posted it? Can you, is, will this become a YouTube retrievable item?
Yeah, that's important, actually. If, if we don't, if we don't, if it's not on YouTube now, will it still be recorded and on there later?
Yes.
No, I mean, if, is it, is there a way we could prove that we have the notice on right now? Doesn't do any good to have it later.
I think if we say right now, and I'm gonna say it right now, Alex, and go ahead and post it on the, on the website or whatever, however you're gonna do that, and then we'll get this thing started.
Can we do a screenshot or something to prove that we've done it?
You don't trust the employee to tell us? Vice Chair Mazza?
The person who's going to use it, not to sue us.
They'll sue us.
I have an iPad here and I can check, uh, the city of Malibu right here. Not showing anything streaming or anything.
I would say give staff a, you know, a minute or two to, 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 to do that, if that is the will of the, of the commission. And then Vice Chair Mazza, you, you are accurate, we should wait for that to formally be up and that way we can all ensure I will check as well on my other screen here um, to ensure that that's what's coming up.
Yeah, I, I agree to that. That's for sure.
Pat, should we take like a, like a ten minute recess or something, just to?
Hey, they, they mentioned that they can do this very quickly. I think that we are now looking at resuming in two to three minutes.
We haven't opened the meeting anywhere, right?
Correct, we haven't opened, so we can't recess, but I'm, I'm just worried it might confuse people to get here and not see anybody.
Right. I believe what Director Moloko was thinking was a kind of an informal, hey, let's just re, let's just all come back in five or 10 minutes, but if staff, not to put them under the gun, because it's very important, as Vice Chair Mazza said, that that link to the Zoom is clear and accurate. Because that, that would be a problem if someone goes there, tries to access it based on the information, either on Zoom, excuse me, not on Zoom, on YouTube or on the cable channel, and that's inaccurate, then we could have a problem on our hands.
So perhaps Craig could tell us when it appears.
Yeah, I've got.
I'm sure that Parker or Alex will pop into the meeting as well to let us know when we're ready to go.
Well, it's Mr. Donigan, he's got it on his other screen. Sure, Mr. Dick Donigan's got two or three screens going on there.
Just two, just two.
Wow.
What if you were on the moon and it didn't work? Technology is technology.
Well, unless any of our commissioners have a space flight scheduled soon, I think we're okay for now.
So Rebecca, will they be posting it? Not on the YouTube channel itself, not the city's webpage?
I believe that's the intent um, to have like a placeholder message, but they'll respond to that as soon as they're.
Because, because Richard, at least my understanding, I, I, I've been poking around right now, when you go to the city's website, it lists it and you click the icon that says watch live, it takes you to YouTube.
So that's where I am as well. I see it says ten people watching.
And three of them are in this room. Maybe four.
I, I'm on YouTube and see three potential places where a notice would show up. Um, it hasn't on any. One is just on the list of my subscriptions, City of Malibu is one of them. There's nothing on that list of recent videos, then I can click on view channel.
Oh, here we go.
Beautiful.
All right, screenshot here.
Yep, go ahead and grab that, Richard. I think, I think this is, this is in, yeah, I think this would be sufficient, but I will let the, the will of the commission decide.
I don't see anything.
Maybe refresh?
Yeah, I'm refreshing. I do see a placeholder for the council meeting next week. And a few other meetings this week.
Rebecca, I'm gonna send it to you.
Thank you.
That way you can.
Yeah, I'll put it into the meeting record.
You're actually getting it, Richard?
Yes, I am.
As am I. We, if you go on YouTube, Commissioner Hill, and, and click to view it, it'll, it'll pop right up.
I, I'm on YouTube and I have three different places where it could conceivably show up and it's not in any of them. So I don't know, if you guys are seeing it, then.
So click.
Alrighty. Rebecca, you should see it in your inbox.
Got it. That's perfect. Um, and just for the record, it states, due to technical difficulties, the Malibu Planning Commission meeting will not be streamed to YouTube or Channel Three. The meeting may be viewed live on Zoom by going to, and it gives the URL for viewing the meeting on Zoom and also gives a phone number for assistance, lets them know recording of the meeting will be uploaded on eleven twenty-two. So with that, I believe we're ready to proceed.
Rebecca, I, I just want to be sure. So that, that says malibu city dot org backslash virtual meeting. Is there a way that we can put the actual? Because I mean, when you, when you go there, it just takes you to the virtual meeting page.
You, you can click the Zoom link from that page unless I'm mistaken. Um, let me.
Once, once again, that, that's what I'm trying to do, so I can, so it's.
I, unless, you can't click on the, the TV screen.
No, you click, uh, when you first log into that page, you click watch the meeting. And from there you have the option to join the Zoom meeting at the bottom of that screen. I'm seeing it.
Got it. Perfect, okay.
Yeah, and I would be, it's clickable for me.
When I, when I click it, it takes me back to exactly where I was in YouTube previously.
And I'm, I'm talking about not, not clicking the, a YouTube link. I'm talking about clicking the Zoom meeting ID at the bottom of that screen.
Would that just take us to Zoom?
Yes, and that's what we're asking people to click.
Okay, I'm, I, what I'm saying is I don't see any notice on YouTube.
Um, I can forward you the screenshot.
And then.
I believe.
So yeah, so, so here's, so I've, Rebecca, thank you so much for this. Here's what it is right now. It basically takes you to the city's website. And after one or two, probably just one mouse click, when you hit watch the meeting, if you scroll down, you can say, it says, join the Zoom meeting, and there's an icon and you can click on it. You know, is that sufficient to, to, or is everyone comfortable with that? Or if not, and I, I, I hate to do this, the Zoom meeting ID is a mere, what's that, eleven digits? Is there a way we can put that on, I mean, on YouTube? I mean, Richard, do, do, do you understand my point that if someone's not up to speed and, and, and they, they, they haven't been here a bunch, i- i- it may be, I can see someone looking at it, getting frustrated and saying, throwing their hands up in the air and saying, hey, this is, this is a mess. So, so I, I do apologize to, to, to city staff. I, I should have been clear during my initial direction, but if we can put that Zoom meeting ID up, similarly, you know, we can, we can, we, we can keep exactly the way it is. You can, after that period and assistance, you can simply put, the Zoom can be accessed by the following meeting ID. I think we should be good to go.
And Parker and Alex, if you can just like give a, a thumbs up or something to let us know that you've heard that.
Yes.
Thank you. I was sure that you did, but. Thank you. I was sure that you did, but.
But what? I I'm throwing my hands up because I'm I'm confident that I can navigate YouTube quite well. And I'm not seeing any notice that says go to Zoom.
I'm, I think that you might have an issue with caching. You might need to clear the cache on your iPad. That has sometimes happened to some of our students in the program I worked with previously. If you clear your browser history.
What about the fact that we're almost 30 minutes into the past the start of the meeting and people may have been going to YouTube and. Just saying, hey, well, there's nothing here, uh, you know, and I'm out of here. Uh, you know, there's, there's always that.
Yeah, I mean, this, the it was posted and and before that it did kind of say, it wasn't just a blank screen. It it kind of showed the, what I understand is kind of the typical waiting. Screen prior to the meeting starting. So Commissioner Whitten, that is a, a, you know. A decent point, but it wasn't like it was a blank screen that someone would click on it and go whoops, okay, it's canceled. Nothing's here. It basically was kind of a in a state of purgatory for whatever that was about the, you know, last 20 minutes or so.
Well, if we have pushback. We can't have a meeting twice. So, uh, you know, I'm kind of tending to let Jeff go to sleep, uh, because. What do we do if we do have back and then we've already voted on stuff, do we just unvote it?
Well, I mean, I don't, go ahead, Rebecca.
Uh, I was just going to say, I don't think we would have a legal issue at this point. Um, and I do believe staff has has indicated that they can make this update quickly. I think that we will be starting very shortly. And those that were intending to actually speak on items should be present in the Zoom meeting regardless. And anybody intending to simply view will still have that option following the meeting.
Well, it doesn't look like we're losing anybody. We've still got two pages of folks watching the movie or watching us, the movie. Watching us, the the commission.
And we've actually picked up a couple.
But if this thing goes sideways, then what Director Malika, do we? Now what?
Yeah.
If, oh, go ahead, Pat.
Well, I was gonna say, I mean, and so, you know, I am, this is. Not the first time this has happened. This happens seemingly more often than it should, not not just in in the city of Malibu. I'm I'm talking about in all jurisdictions and and the kind of the key takeaway, and you're right, it's never been litigated. Um, but the kind of the the best practices is that. Public participation is not damaged, i.e. if we couldn't zoom this, this would be an easy one. Hey, can't do it. Let's all, let's all go home. Provided that mechanism is still there, I am very confident from a purely legal perspective. That any action we take, anything we 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 discuss today is sound. Now, from a policy perspective, which is, you know, why you all are up here, um, if that's, if you guys are comfortable with that. If you think it's just, it's a, you know, a bad look for the city or just something that you guys don't want to proceed with. Hey, that's, that's a thousand percent your call. That's why you guys are the city decision maker.
Do we have to renotice?
If the commission were to just adjourn this and. And I think move everything to a date certain of the fifth, we would be fine. Uh, because you'd be continuing it in a public forum, because a- as Pat mentioned. Uh, Zoom is working. So folks can comment. It it's one of the. The. The viewing platforms, but if the commission would like to do that, more than glad. To make that happen, we can bring all these items at the next regularly scheduled meeting, because I. I think it'd be pretty hard to put together a special meeting between now and the, I think the fifth, if I'm not mistaken, uh, with the Thanksgiving holiday.
And and just for everyone, and sorry, just to to book in that, from what I, my view on YouTube now is that we are, we are sound. It it gives whoever did it in the city did a great job. They give a link that you can look at and type directly into your browser. That will bring you right to this Zoom meeting.
Uh, you know, I'm I'm sorry, I'm I'm still seeing, I've cleared cache, I've rebooted my iPad. There's nothing on YouTube that says go to Zoom.
Um, I can try giving it a fresh click. Because I have not previously viewed that correctly.
Gentlemen, what's your gut, Commissioner Whitten?
You're you're.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I I think we're all right. I I, you know, I I think, you you know, the. People that want to speak are are in the Zoom, uh, the, it'll be recorded, uh, you know, if. I don't see a problem.
I do see it now finally. It's it's refreshed and here it is, so.
All right, let's get this party started then. Commissioner Jennings, you're gonna be okay?
No, I just. Any more delay to the people who have had items before us is just completely negative, so.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, Greg, just so you know, you're not on video.
That's weird. I didn't stop. There's some kind of gremlin in this room, I think.
Okay, Dennis, if you'd like to call to order.
Okay. Good evening, friends and neighbors. I would like to call order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting on the date of November 21st, 2022. Happy birthday, Drew. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Commissioners and city staff are participating in this Zoom meeting from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to MalibuCity.org slash virtual meeting. At that screen, click one of two tabs to either watch or sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up. Before the item has been called by the chair. Those wishing to deter to deter defer time to someone that's intending to speak are not required to sign up, but must be present in the meeting. If instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker. Please click the raised hand button at the bottom of the Zoom screen when the public hearing for the item is open. A speaker may accept up to five additional minutes, one minute for each speaker that defers time for a maximum total of eight minutes. Alex, would you please show that slide? Well, we know that.
If they're busy on the background, the on a cell phone or tablet, you press star nine.
That's fine. So commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand. I will call on you in turn. So we can make our decision for the record and the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitten.
Here.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great.
Make a motion to approve the agenda. With, as staff recommends, with item 5C. I continue to a date uncertain and item 5D continue to December.
Wait, what?
December 5th.
5B?
D isn't.
Sorry.
But that's what the staff recommends anyway, right?
Yeah.
Yes, he's moving stock recommendation.
One second.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we have a roll call, please.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitten.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the report on the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on November 10th, 2022.
And since we have no ceremonial presentations, we have the written and oral communications from the public. Recording secretary. Rebecca, do we have anybody that's speaking tonight?
Yes, we do. Interesting. We have Norman Haney, who has signed up in advance of the meeting to speak. If anyone else present in the meeting intends to speak on an item within the purview of the planning commission, but not agendized for this meeting. They may click the raise hand button while Norm is speaking to indicate their interest.
Okay. There's, are, good evening, commissioners. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great, great. You know, I. Probably missed only one planning commission in the past 30 plus years. And I have a tremendous amount of respect for the planning commission. And I know they, I know they've gone through some challenging issues in the past several years. What I'm calling about is several bizarre new interpretations of development standards that have been around a long time. One of them, one of my clients wants to build a. Wall on a side property line on Birdview. Now, the. Planning Department has told me I have to go to the LIP. Section 65B4. Where it says fences and walls in landscaping shall not block views of scenic areas. From scenic roads, parks, beaches and other public viewing points. Well, on this particular case. There was a wall constructed across the entire front. And there's also a sidewall. The problem is that that sidewall is in some cases three feet on my client's property. And she wants to remove it and put it on the, actually two inches on her property. But very close to the side property line, only off the property line by two inches, because. She doesn't have the right to build anything on my neighbors or on her neighbor's property. Um, staff is saying. That I can't do that. I can't build any solid structure. Higher than the access, uh, street in front. This is a side lot. And it doesn't block any ocean views because there are no ocean views. So the very premise of. 6.5 B4 is that you can't block ocean views. If there are no ocean views to block. Then I don't see why she can't build a wall on the property line. Then they direct me to 6.5 E1. That says. Where topography of a project site descends from the roadway. New development shall be sited and designed to preserve blue water ocean views. Preserve. That's, that's the word that is most important. There are none to preserve. So, um, when I've said, I'd like to bring the project up in front. Of the planning commission and have them make a decision. Uh, they say no. You 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 can't make an application for the wall, period. Well, I've already made an application for the wall. You know, moving on.
Mister Haney, um, you are at time.
Okay.
Uh, this could also, if you so choose, be placed into an email to the commissioners. That could be processed as public correspondence for the subsequent meeting, if it's a lengthier piece that you'd like to state. Um, our next speaker is Ryan Embry.
Uh, good evening, commissioners. The, uh, subject is the improper antenna tower at 23555. West Civic Center Way at the LA County site. That project. Is a changed use from a prior project, which incorporated a building. On the site, approximately 250 square feet, uh, maybe a tad more or less. That housed the radio equipment. Architecturally with brick matched to the 1960s construction of the sheriff's station. I'm aware of that because I was part of that project and getting it done at no cost to the city. The current proposal does not incorporate into the. Structure of the replacement building of the Santa Monica College. And instead is a fairly obvious attempt to commercialize with more than just one cellphone carrier. On it. And this use is not, um, a historic use. As as much as the county and so forth would probably like to say. And that because the prior use had a cellular company's generator with battery backup. And equipment to operate during, uh, an extended long-term emergency. The use of the county's equipment cannot be deemed emergency equipment. Because it's used every single day of the year, as was the cellular. So it is not a reserve item for emergency use. And it was improperly submitted to the city. It's basically a lie. Um, the planning director should reject the proposal. Because it was not genuinely made. In that the height of the structure, when interpreted for the purpose of the structure by the FAA. As the obstruction that it is, um, was submitted at the proposed height. And yet, when the proposed structure was submitted to the city. It was submitted at a height significantly less. And so for those reasons, the project needs to be rejected, press the reset button and completely start over. And integrate the facilities into the structure of the building, as was the historic use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Embry. And I'm just popping through and I don't see any other people intending to speak this evening, if you'd like to move forward.
Okay, um, commissioners. Vice Chair Mazza.
Yes, I'd like to comment on both. Norman and Ryan's comments. In the past, we use a, and we should still be using an LIP interpretation manual, which. Goes to Zoraces and makes the interpretations and gets vetted and gets put in the manual. It appears that we haven't been using that. Last meeting was an example where we had two different interpretations of what a neighborhood is. And as many meetings. So. Items like norms should be. Put in that manual, made clear and follow. Uh, we need to follow our interpretation manual, be consistent, because part of our. Job is to make sure that everybody's treated the same way. And, uh, I think we need to go back to that system. I know we rarely have Zoraces meetings anymore, but. We used to do it and everything got straightened out, at least for a couple of years. Now, on Ryan's. Statements, I I got a card last week on a proposed. Development. On the county bill. And it showed the whole county building, including the new school and everything in the map. Is this what we're talking about? Something to do with the tower on the college or is it on the county building? The old county building or is it just a totally different project? Because I couldn't tell from the notice. And I wonder if that's what Ryan's talking.
Commissioner Mazza. I believe Ryan was speaking to the existing tower by his comments about the FAA letter. And and the the height difference there. And I believe that's who he was speaking about and we have directed the county. To come to the city for one being a amendment. Uh, for the height, we've also asked for a survey of the height, so we could. You know, see what's there and relate it to what the planning commission saw. Uh, during that hearing and then also as part of it, the county understands too that they need to obtain the use permits. Uh, and then if any wireless facility were to be located there, that too would would require the the use permit, so. The county, whatever it is that they do, whether they choose to lower the tower or pursue additional height. Um, that's not going to be a staff level. Item that 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 will be coming to the planning commission and then it is appealable to the city council.
Well, my real question is, was that the notice I got? Couple of days ago, the little card. The little card that said pending?
No.
Because it covers the county buildings, all of the county buildings. That has nothing to do with this.
I, I believe that to be a separate item.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis, that's what I, I wanted to comment on that, too.
Okay, go ahead.
It, yeah, I just wanted to point out that, that we did get that notice for what is being described as fully screened rooftop equipment on the existing LA County building. So that, that's not the antenna, that's something else. And just to say that it's listed as an administrative plan review, but given all the interest that the public has shown about what's going on there and the heights of things, that should probably come to us so we have a public forum to address. I mean, unless you can tell us something right off the bat that, you know, whatever, they're adding a foot to hi- additional height to the building and it's no big deal or, I don't know, but it just, at first blush, it looks like something the public would want to weigh in on.
So Pat, uh, perhaps here, if there's any questions, you can jump in for me. The, the, the proposals for new rooftop mechanical equipment and what they filed for is an administrative plan review. And Pat, feel free to stop me if I'm giving too much detail, too, because I know it's not a agendized item.
So we, I mean, I think as long as it remains informational and no direction by a majority of the, of the commission is given, I think you're fine to update them.
So it, the item qualifies for it up, it, they applied for an administrative planner. We haven't rendered a decision yet, we're looking at it. If it meets all the criteria of an administrative plan review, the code, it's in chapter seventeen, our zoning ordinance, says that those are to be decided upon by the planning director. And then the discretionary approval, which is the request for height, if that is found to be consistent with the site plan review criteria contained in chapter seventeen, that too is within the director's ability to approve. It is, that decision because of the site plan review is appealable to the planning commission. But I don't believe that there is a mechanism by which a project can just automatically be forwarded if it meets that criteria. So this one, it falls under what the director has the purview on in both in terms of the, the development permit and then also that side menu dish, the, the, the side order in this case being the site plan review, that too is direct, is a decision by the director. So I don't believe that unless it's an, unless it's on appeal, I don't have the ability just to punt this to the planning commission under our code, despite the interest in it. It, that interest would have to come through an appeal, correct, Pat?
Well, once again, without commenting specifically on this project, because I'm not intimately aware as Director Malika is, I do know that that last statement is accurate. There are certain things in the code that require action by the director, of course, appealable, but no real mech- excuse me, no real unilateral mechanism for them, for us to avoid that process and to simply say, we're going to do something different, we're going to kick it to someone else just because, you know, for X, Y, and Z.
Maybe, maybe there's some discretionary public information option to just, you know, make sure that people are really aware of it.
What I will do is I will forward, Pat, the code sections that apply here. Uh, that this application is being reviewed under, and then that way, Pat, you can see the exact references I'm, I'm referring to. Uh, and, you know, I, I, I do, like in our LIP, for example, there is a very clear statement that says that an administrative permit can be made into a full hearing if agreed to by the applicant. There is an opportunity that that language exists for in our LIP, but that similar language does not exist in MMC. And I believe a lot of that actually goes back to the two thousand and four public hearing at the city council, where the city council specifically broke apart what used to be called plot planner reviews. The two thousand and four council or the two thousand and two, but it might be two thousand and four council action is what created the, the rules that I'm following. And it was, uh, in order to streamline development review in the city.
Okay, Vice Chair Mazza, real quick.
Real quick, uh, wouldn't this be considered a public work? And it wouldn't be under the LIP or the LC, LUP be required to be reviewed?
Yeah, so once again, I, I don't mean to dil- but I want to make sure that we don't say anything during a public meeting that is, you know, unequivocally our position that we can't go back on. I believe we've, we've, so if you want to direct the general scope of public work, Director Malika, I'm fine with that. Answering specific questions on specific projects in a public forum without fully fleshing them out between our, my, my office and, and, and city staff's office is, is not advisable. So if you want to give the kind of the general parameters to, to answer Vice Chair Mazza's question, I'm totally fine with that. An unequivocal answer on a specific project that is not before the commission tonight, inadvisable.
Completely understand. And I, I think, as I mentioned earlier, it's still under review. This is not an approved project, just because that notice went out, it does not mean it's approved. We are still looking at it and it, as part of that, there is also the review of whether or not it is exempt from the requirements of the CDP. So no decisions have been made on the project that was, that's simply a public notice. Once it's a decision's made, then of course, there's an appeal period. So it's still a work in progress and these are all things we're going to be looking at. And as I mentioned, I will be sending these code sections over to Pat. So he'll have them to look at to see that we're proceeding correctly, given the interest.
Okay. Commissioner Wetton, do you have any comments?
Well, just, just to follow on, so I understand on, on this item that we were talking about, uh, an APR can be appealed to the planning commission, is that correct?
If it has a discretionary review attached to it. So if an APR has, you know, no site planner view, it's, it is, it goes back to the director for review. And the director's decision is final. If there is a discretionary item attached to an APR, those go to the planning commission. And then if whatever the outcome may be, the applicant or the appellant, if they're not satisfied with the outcome, it can then be taken to the city council.
Great, thank you. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Jennings, I see you're just drinking away over there.
Yeah, uh, no, the only thing, this is only slightly related. Years ago, we had a dispute about whether uh, the planning director could, uh, on his own right determine that, uh, an administrative plan review was not appropriate and require the filing of a CDP. And the way I remember it, uh, it was the city's position that, that the negative determination, the determination that uh, an A, an APR was not appropriate, was not appealable. And, um, can't remember, that was several years ago, you might remember, Richard, I think you were the, no, no, maybe you weren't, but I know you were here. Anyway, it's just sort of a related problem in terms of what gets appealed, who gets the final decision and so forth.
Okay. The only thing I really have is, uh, I'm going to steal a line from Vice Chair Mazza. I've had a lot of people call me and and, uh, the only thing I, I'm, I'm really honest, honestly hearing about is our twenty-four hour rule, where we try and get back to everybody that gets a hold of us in twenty-four hours. Now, while that's commendable, and I'm sure some people do get a call back in twenty-four hours, I don't know how you can do that, Director Malika, there's just, you're too busy, you're training people, you're trying to make that whole side of the building work. I don't know if you have the opportunity to give yourself an extra day or we're back to you in seventy-two hours, but, you know, the twenty-four hour rule and then people just get upset. And that's, I don't know if that, I don't think that's a fault. I think it's a there's too much to do for, to have to react so quickly. I'm just, I'm trying to give you a little bit of room here, if you think you can do it, if it's something you guys are allowed to do or make a move. I, I know we want to be the best we can and, and everybody's trying to do that, but dude, I don't know how you can, how you can, everybody can do that. Some people are going to win and some aren't, and then they're upset because, well, you say you're going to be back to us in twenty-four hours and you can't do it. There's not enough time in the day, you don't have enough people, qualified people to call back and give the answers that people are wanting. So that's all, if you, if you got some room there, maybe that's something you can do.
I greatly appreciate that. We, uh, as it is today, I got another email about COVID in the department and having to have some folks be home. And we're doing our best to have folks work remote when that happens. But yes, I'll be, I'll follow up with the city manager as well. I think it is more realistic, I, to say two to three days.
Yeah.
We could, we could at least acknowledge that we received the email, but yes, some of these, the amount of calls we receive in a day, I think will blow your mind as lo- as well as emails. And so the folks are trying to keep up, but I appreciate that. It is something that the city manager and I are, are looking at and we probably will extend that, given the amount of staffing and the number of calls coming in.
Yeah, great. And it, it's better for, for the whole city, you know, and, and, and morale inside the, inside the building. So those are the things that matter to me. Um, okay, that's all I have. How about, uh, we move on for the consent calendar? Oh, wait, staff report, excuse me, Director Malika.
No problem. We, at the end of this meeting, are going to just give an update, Patricia Salazar will be doing that on some of the changes we've made in terms of how we're interacting with the public and trying to get some middles back into the city. It's an attempt to keep up with current technology as we go with the digital age. So she'll provide that update at the end and just wanted to let you guys know that, anybody who's listening who's interested.
Okay, great. Um, okay, consent calendar. We, uh, we don't have any previously discussed, so we're on to new items.
Hang on, hang on. We, I think we have some, some to talk about, three B one.
Oh.
I'd like to pull three B one.
Okay.
I, I believe, I believe Chair Smith was, was referencing three A. And so he has moved past that one, now we're on three B one, correct, Chair Smith?
I'm on three B one now, yes.
Got it.
Vice Chair Mazza, is that what you're understanding?
I don't know what three A is.
Just previously discussed items.
Oh, okay, no, I'm, I want to pull three B one, not three A one, a three A. So on on three B one, uh, I think we have a, I'm worried about a serious process problem here. We have a, a applicant who has applied for an extension. And the reason is I just bought the property. And when you look at our instructions on how to give extensions, it says just make sure I get it exactly right. It says, changes to project ownership or architect and, and elective project redesigns do not by themselves constitute due cause. So we have this policy. We have a letter saying, I just bought the property, I need more time. But, and this is my conundrum, I can't vote against a, a policy that's been used over and over and over and over again. So, and I don't see any reason not to give an extension. But I would rather not violate our policies. Because if we're consistent on our policies, especially when they're published, and especially when our staff report, we need to think about how not to do that. And one of the ways not to do that is it's reported on this project that they are under construction. And projects under construction vest. Now, that's always been, uh, you know, everybody goes, oh, don't talk to me about vesting because I can't describe it. But we have hundreds of projects a year that do not get extensions once they're on being constructed, hundreds. So I don't know why this item is on our agenda. It was not properly, well, the excuse, the reason for us to vote for it, even if we wanted to, has been not, not applied for. So I'm wondering why. And I talked to Patrick as a matter of disclosure. He says the only person that can pull it is the applicant. My first question would be, is it really under construction? Does it have permits to be doing what they're doing? And if so, can we ask the applicant to pull it? Because the alternative is to have, to pass this, is to have planning commissioners vote against their own policy and vote against their own staff report. So that's my question.
Mr. Hill.
Yeah, it's not just a question of policy, it's LIP thirteen point two one about change of ownership not constituting due cause. So, yeah, I, I had similar concerns. It seemed like it said they started construction, so maybe they don't need the extension here. So maybe, maybe that's enough. And, and then beyond that, if we do feel like they need an extension, I'm hung up and I, I emailed Richard about this last week about what was Walt Keller calling out? He provided some, some CDP numbers and so forth that I couldn't make heads or tails of. But he had concerns about a bunch of things like, for instance, primary view obstruction, mature height of new foliage, colors and materials of the structure, glossy roll form metal siding, et cetera. And I don't know how relevant that is because I couldn't see what those documents were. And maybe it's not, if, if, if construction has started, then we're sort of done here. But if not, then I'm not sure where we are.
Mister Donigan, are we?
So I mean, so, so they've, 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 I guess, kind of teed up the issue, but since this item was pulled, you know, typically, if, I guess, if there's a brief staff report, we go that and we kind of hear the item. This is not like some of the other ones where we bring it back as a full CDP or anything like this. This is a, you know, po- not a policy decision, but this is a discretionary act for you all to decide on. So we need to treat it as such, so, you know, staff report, let the applicant, let's, let's hear from them, open it up to members of the public, and then you all deliberate whether or not the findings can be made here for an extension.
Can we deliberate on whether or not it needs an extension?
And so that, that can be done after, once again, we open it up. This is, we, 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 the item's been pulled, as I said, this is a bit different. Sometimes these items are whether to come back for a full hearing. This is, this is not the, that one. This is a request for an extension. So as I said before, I don't know if everyone's read it, I don't know if staff is even going to give a small staff report. We need to treat it as basically like, like the item was on the agenda and then go and then treat it like that.
Okay, I'll, I'll start it. Three B one on new items, extension of coastal development permit number fourteen dash zero five zero and site plan review number seventeen dash zero three four. A request to extend planning commission approval of, of an application for construction of a new two-story, single-family residence with attached two-car garage, basement, swimming pool, spa, retaining walls, decks, and onsite wastewater treatment system. Uh, any disclosures?
None.
Vice Chair Mazza.
I talked to, uh, Patrick and I sent an email to staff asking for their comments.
Commissioner Hill.
Yeah, I emailed staff just wanting to see what was up here, so I'm hoping they'll just clarify for us and, yeah.
Commissioner Jennings.
Done.
Commissioner Wetton.
None.
None for me. Okay. Senior Planner Thompson.
Good evening, Chair Smith and members of the planning commission. I'm just going to provide a very brief staff report for the public located at five zero zero one Ensignal Canyon. And as the chair mentioned, this is for a time extension for the coastal development permit number fourteen zero five zero. Just to answer some of the questions that did briefly come up, permits were issued in August of this year of twenty twenty-two. And most recently, or that would have been, yes, August eleventh, twenty twenty-two, would have been the most recent permit that was issued. And then a secondary for the septic, which was also actually just issued on November ninth, twenty twenty-two. And that concludes my brief staff presentation, it looks like, Richard, I'll tip her.
Yeah, and I I apologize, Commissioner Hill, that it's been a busy day today. So I apologize and I get back to you. And the I apologize, Commissioner Hill, that it's been a busy day today. So I apologize and I get back to you. Um, the, I, the items that were brought up in, in the email about the various cases, none of those conditions, uh, would be changing as part of this. Uh, we would not be, or there's no proposal to amend, uh, any part of the application. Uh, if I don't want to misspeak here. Um, if this were a CDP amendment, then we're opening up the conditions of approval, in which case the, the commission could make alterations. Yeah, for example, if they wanted to lower the height of some of the landscaping or something like that, uh, that could be done through the amendment process, but as an extension, uh, the commission, it, we would be unable to, because one, we haven't noticed it as a public hearing, uh, for an amendment to the project, we'd be unable to modify any conditions of the project. So the project is as it is. It's simply a matter of extending the, the expiration date.
Well, it, it, it seems like the threshold question is how they started work. And so is this vested now or?
And they have, they have started work, which means they've, they had a pre-job, so this thing's already moving forward. Now, um, while we may not agree on a lot of things, I've got your, I understand how you feel on this one, and I'm not sure why there's an extension either, because they've taken off, they've got a pre-job, they have inspections, the card gets signed, they're moving forward. So I know, a lot of people like to hedge their bets. Go ahead, Mr. Donigan.
I just want to be sure before we get into that, we should open it up to the applicant. I want to make sure.
Okay, alright, very sorry. Thank you.
We do have the applicant Ronaldo David, who's both partial owner and applicant, and his subcontractor June available this evening to respond to your questions. Um, if you could unmute for Ronaldo David.
Uh, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Ronaldo David. I'm, uh, the, um, part owner and contractor of this property. And yeah, like what you guys, uh, said, yes, yeah, we already started the construction. And we already finished the grading. And we're, uh, about to pour concrete on the, on the, on the footing for the basement and the foundation. And yes, we did apply for the extension because we want to make sure that, uh, in case we need something from the planning commission, you know, we have an active, uh, permit. And, uh, you know, in effect to, to finish the construction.
Okay.
Yes. So yeah, we applied this, uh, time extension be like, uh, yeah, when we got the, when we got the property in the middle of, uh, middle of the year.
Okay. Very good. Um, anybody else on your team want to speak?
No, no, we're good. That's it.
Okay. All right, then back to the, to the, uh, table here with us, uh, Vice Chair Mazza.
Yeah, I, um, I would like to ask Mr. David, given the fact, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Richard. If they did not ask for this extension, they would not receive a stop work order from the city. And the project would continue. Since I've never seen a stop work order on somebody who didn't get a CDP extension after they had started the project. So I would like to ask the applicant if he would like to drop this item uh, from the vote because basically what we're being asked to do, we're not allowed to do. At least if, as far as I, my ethics go, uh, I follow city codes and city guidelines. Um, so I'd like to ask him if he would like to drop it rather than have us vote.
Mr. Donigan, is, can we, is that allowed?
I, 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 I believe it, it would be best before we have that, that exchange. Yes, of course, it is allowed to open it up to any other members of the public if, if, if they would like to speak. Um, but yes, of course, if the applicant is, is on the record here saying, I voluntarily withdraw my application, that is fine. Uh, but once again, we want to make sure we get any other members of the public first, Chair Smith.
Okay, Record, Recording Secretary Evans, do we have anybody that wants to speak?
There are no other members of the public who have signed in, up in advance of the meeting to speak on this item. If you're present in the meeting and wish to discuss it, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen now. And seeing none.
Okay. Uh, well, let me just double check here with everybody. Uh, Commissioner Jennings?
Yes, um, couple of things. I guess the first question is to staff, um, in light of, uh, policy number five, why did staff recommend approval of the extension?
So our reason, reasoning i- is because the, the policy doesn't address when work starts. And in the past, we've had the question come before the planning commission of when someone processes a CDP amendment. And the CDP has passed its expiration date, but yet work has continued, which is typical. It, it's not, you know, uh, oftentimes, uh, most folks are in a situation that by the time they, they start the project, their CDP is expired. Uh, but that is fine as long as they continue, um, you know, to seek, uh, progressive, Dennis can correct me on the term, progressive inspections, and they're passing their inspections. Um, and they keep valid building permits. And so one of the things we can definitely look at in the future, because Pat and I had this discussion today, is, uh, you know, this could be an item that we could look at of, you know, specifically calling it out in the, the policy that, uh, once a project commences work, um, they are not eligible to, uh, obtain a, uh, extension. However, I do want to be careful on the word of vesting. Uh, Pat and I, we, we try not to hand out vesting letters like candy. Uh, when somebody comes before us to find out if their project's vested, uh, we do ask them to provide evidence that, you know, not only did they start work, but they made, uh, some meaningful progress, uh, sunk a substantial amount of money into it. Um, because what we don't want to have happen is someone pull a permit, move of some dirt round, get, get an inspection and then walk away for six years and then try to come back.
Okay.
Just to echo, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Jennings, sorry.
The, um, yes, e- e- everything that, that, uh, Richard just said is consistent with what the city's position has always been, that the idea of, um, when does, when does a project vest, when is construction start? Is, well, we'll look at it case by case basis. There's no hard and fast rules on any of this, and that maintains the city's uh, flexibility in, in, uh, some way. Uh, the, the, the policy, the LCP policies, having, I'm going to repeat myself because I've said this probably 10 times at least. The policies are put together by staff to tell the public how they are going to deal with applications that have a certain circumstances. They are not law. They are not approved by, uh, the planning, by the, uh, city council, sorry. They are simply the expression of how the staff is going to deal with a particular application. In that light, they are not binding on the planning commission. They're not binding on anybody. They're not even binding on staff. They're, they're basically a direction trying to tell the public, this is how we're going to handle these problems. So I can see the point of, even though the project has vested, even though work has started, there is an advantage to having a, an ongoing CDP for the reasons stated. That is that maybe you want to change the project, maybe you want to come in for an amendment, and it's a good idea to have the, um, the CDP, uh, in place. As far as, as the extension is concerned, I see, uh, I, I don't see anything in, in 13 point, um, 13 point 21 that has anything to do with change of ownership. Um, it's provision itself is only four lines long unless, unless my book is out of date. So those are my thoughts.
Commissioner Wetton?
Well, I think Commissioner Jennings probably made my point. I, I'm concerned with, uh, the, the, the fact that if, if you don't have a, uh, if you have an expired CDP and he comes back for an amendment later, how is that treated? Is that just a discretionary, uh, Richard on, on, on the part of the uh, planning department? Or i- i- does he have a problem if he, if he comes back for, uh, CDP amendment later?
Certainly. We, we do, that would come back to this, 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 uh, this planning commission, uh, this would, that would come back to you. I'm, I was trying to look through our database. I don't see where we've ever denied one uh, that had an expired CDP permit. We've, we have let people do it. Uh, however, uh, we have had discussions at the planning commission about how is it that one can change an expired CDP? And I don't know, Pat, if you've been privy to any of those. I think it's mainly been Trevor, but I do get the planning commission's concern when a few commissioners bring that up because uh, one would see the expiration date on it and assume that, uh, you know, that, that's it. You, you can't do anything beyond that.
And I, I, I just want to echo Director Malika, and I believe Commissioner Jennings' point about whether or not development has, has commenced. That is a case by case analysis that staff takes very seriously. I'm not going to comment on, on, on Mr. David's project. We, 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 we haven't done that process, but just because someone has pulled a permit and done work on their property, that does not necessarily mean development has convent, commenced. What I mean by that is that if you pull a permit for X and then go do A, B, and C, the city doesn't say, oh, yes, you've commenced, that, that, that development that's commenced must be consistent and in line with your CDP and then what other permits you have pulled, i.e., we don't give people the benefit of the doubt if they've commenced development in violation of the city's municipal code to say, oh, don't worry about it. So, so just because work is being done and, and, and Mr. Mr. David, that's not an indication on your property. I have no idea what's gone on there. And so I think we all know the issues in terms of the relative utility of an extension. Uh, Vice Chair Mazza is kind of, you know, hit the nail on the head in terms of, well, if development has commenced, why would he really need one? And, and, and that's really up to the applicant. We as staff get, get an application, we process it, we bring it to you all who are the city decision makers, not us. Staff doesn't say, nope, you know, you don't need one, we, we refuse to give you a hearing, we can't do that. Thank you.
Okay, so on my thought on this, of course, because, uh, Mr. David, I do the same kind of work that you do, and especially what you're doing right now. So to me, uh, as I, I said before, I went to Mr. Donigan, um, you've started work, you've had a pre-job, you've got inspections, you've got, geez, you've got machinery out there like no tomorrow, and you got a pile of dirt. Um, I, I don't know that you need it. I understand why people do it, kind of hedge their bet, because in case something comes up, you've got the opportunity, you know, it could be anything that held it up. So, um, I understand why, why this was done originally, but, um, to, for me right now, I don't think it's needed, but let's, uh, I'm going to go straight to him, uh, Vice Chair Mazza, hang on. So Miss, Mr. David, um, can we unmute him? Are you willing to drop this? And so we don't have to make any, any further comments on it?
Hi, uh, good evening again. Um, we, we want to continue, uh, just in case, uh, we need some amendments. Uh, we don't see anything right now, but just in case, you know, at least, uh, we, 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 uh, we can go back to commission and ask, uh, for help. Just in case.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yeah, I just want to make it clear that I'm taking, what Jeff said is he doesn't see that language. It is from our staff report. It's from an LCP policy number five issued by the city of Malibu. Okay? It's right there in writing. I read it to you. Now, the reason why this is important is we have to be able to stand behind our LCP policies and follow what they say. Now, the, I want to make, point out that the opposite is another situation. I would say at least 90% at least 90% of our CDPs issued do never, never come back for an extension while they're under construction. So any member, if they, if there's a worry about whether or not city inspections count as under construction, then any member of the public can go into any CDP that has passed its original CDP date that's under construction and challenge it. Okay, any. And so I'm talking, this is a very rare case where people take this, this, uh, approach. And all the others, if we say, oh gee, it doesn't matter, you better get an extension, we have a staff report recommending it. All the others are open season. Okay, open season by anybody in the public at any time. And this is why policies are made. Um, and, and I, and I want to remind Mr. David and anybody else that ever does this, that if we followed what we were given on policy number five and voted this down, do we say the CDP is invalid? Is that what we're saying? We, we say, no, you don't have an extension. You're done. Start over again. It makes no sense. That's why I'm trying to bring this up. It's a policy thing. It makes no sense to vote the way we're instructed and then tell the guy, even though you've been starting to build, uh, you're done. You're over. Whereas if we, if we let him withdraw it, the only way it can be challenged is somebody comes in and proves that he didn't do any work. And that's a much better position to be in. And it, and it, it leaves our position. Now, as far as extensions after the date, the coastal commission on the Big Rock case went to appeal, uh, forgot the name of the street, Craig knows it. And they said, you may not have one day past your extension to apply for an extension. One day. So anybody who applies later because somebody claims they haven't started work, they're toast. They're over with. Um, that's why we have to be very careful with this. So far, we've run the city for 30 years by saying, here's your permit, it's up to the department to make sure you're, you're doing work on your project. We used to have a policy, which I never saw revoked, saying you had to pull a permit every six months for an inspection. Okay, that still exists, but
Right, Vice Chair Mazza, I, I think
the other 95% of the people that don't ask for these also.
Okay, Commissioner Jennings?
No, I just got to clarify that, that when I spoke of not seeing the language about, uh, a change of ownership, I wasn't referring to the policy. It is in the policy. I was referring to the LIP.
Yeah, I, and I, I, I needed to clarify that too. I was, the LIP just quotes due cause.
Right, but our, our, our LIP allows us to make the interpretations, that's what they are.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Wetton, any other thoughts?
No.
All right, I think I guess we have to go to a roll call on this.
We have to have a motion first. I'm going to move the staff.
Hasn't been a motion or a second yet.
Can we ask Mr. David, David if he still wants the same answer?
But it, it, why, why would he do that? It's a no hard no foul, isn't it? Because if we voted down, because he says he's already, excuse me, John. If he voted down because he's already commenced construction, all he's lost is the ability to come back and try to get an amendment. Uh, if, if we, if he passes, it passes. If he doesn't, he, he's no, you know, he's no better, no worse off.
I don't think that's true. I think if we vote this down, it says his CDP is over.
I don't think so.
No.
No, no, it, it absolutely does not. The, the, hey, I, 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 I apologize, Commissioner Hill. I just want to jump in. The, the, the 13.21 in, in the city's LIP, they're, 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 they're two separate clauses. It says the appropriate authority may grant a reasonable extension of time for due cause as, as Commissioner Hill noted. Of course, that, that the policy informs your, your guys' decision. This decision tonight has no bearing whatsoever on whether or not development has commenced. That's a case by case analysis. That is not before the planning commission tonight. And so that is, that is not the case.
Okay, so we have a motion on the, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, great. Let's, uh, let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
I'm completely confused now. I I I don't, I don't know, I don't know what we're voting on now. Um, all right. Well, I had more to say. My hand was up, but I will therefore vote no.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, great.
I I'd like us to consider in the future getting rid of all interpretations if we're not going to follow.
Okay, three B two, let me get my glasses.
Correct. Chair Smith, the minutes, three B two.
I'll move staff recommendation on that too.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, for a continued public hearings. Coastal Development Permit Number twenty-one dash zero-two-two and Demolition Permit Number twenty-two dash zero-two-three, an application to construct a Seacamp pile foundation, road alterations, and utilities relocation. This is a continue, continued, wait a minute, oh yeah, continued from November seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, maybe we have a staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Uh, please excuse my voice. Uh, I think I have a cold as well.
Oh, yeah, that, yes, Mr. Yeah, great.
So before you today, as noted, is coastal development permit number twenty-one zero, zero-two-two and demolition permit number twenty-two zero-two-three at one nine seven six eight Pacific Coast Highway. Next slide, please. Uh, so the project is proposing to construct a new one hundred and seventy-seven foot long Seacamp pile foundation, relocate existing underground utility lines and existing overhead utility lines from the southbound shoulder of PCH to the northbound shoulder of PCH by undergrounding them. In addition, uh, there's associated excavation and repaving along PCH related to the undergrounding. And then there's the removal of existing shotcrete on the slope, uh, adjacent to the proposed location of the Seacamp pile foundation. Next slide, please. Here's a zoomed out aerial map, just to give you a sense of the, the exact location of the project area, uh, in the Big Rock neighborhood. Next slide. And here's a closer look, uh, at the project area. So the area shaded in blue is the area of re, uh, utility relocation, roadway alterations. And the area in red is the approximate location of the Seacamp pile foundation. Next slide, please. Uh, here's a graphic provided by the out, uh, the applicant, uh, just showing the uh, various utility relocations that have to occur, uh, by each utility company, uh, just to give you a better sense of, uh, how that will be, how that's being proposed. Next slide, please. So along with this project comes with, uh, traffic control, given the construction in the public right of way. Uh, the applicant is proposing for both day and night work along PCH, uh, with a four lane configuration during the day and a two lane configuration at night. And per the city's municipal code, any night work requires the approval of the city manager and the applicant intends to follow the city's, uh, process for applying for that approval through the city manager's office. Uh, and separately, um, the city contracted Rincon consultants to take a look at the potential sequoia impacts from this project and to provide the city with, uh, conditions, uh, that could be included in the resolution. And Rincon, uh, studied all aspects of the project, uh, including traffic, noise, hazardous materials, and among other things. And they provided a city, the city with, uh, set list of conditions, and those conditions are included in the resolution in your packet tonight. Next slide, please. Uh, here's just a brief look at the engineering drawings. Uh, the dotted area on your, on the left side of the screen is the existing shotcrete slope that's put, proposed to be removed, uh, to expose the natural slope. And you can see the Seacamp pile, uh, foundation just to the right of that. And, uh, then you are completely within the public right of way, uh, for the entire project. So, next slide, please. Uh, here's just a brief look at the project area, uh, and the beach and the Seacant, um, excuse me, the, the shotcreats, uh, along the slope there. Next slide. And just a co, a closer look at the existing shotcrete wall, um, and those drainage, uh, outlets are proposed to remain. Next slide, please. So in some, in summary, staff recommends the planning commission finds that the proposed project is consistent with sequoia and approves the proposed project as conditioned. And I believe we have, uh, representatives from the California Department of Transportation on, uh, on the Zoom as well as, uh, representatives from the city's, uh, coastal engineering, uh, department and, uh, Public Works Department to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Take disclosures?
Yes, disclosures. Commissioner Hill?
Okay, um, I did some looking, confirming what I know about the terrain on Google Earth. Uh, it's not in the project report, but this is in the zone of the nineteen eighty-three slide directly below both the, the remediated slide zone, but the edges of it are below unremediated adjacent unslid portions. Uh, I also did write to Jim Medina at Caltrans almost a year ago when this was publicly noticed, just saying, uh, I guess they were asking for input on the day or night and when they wanted, and I I said, propose the hybrid schedule that maybe there were some things that could be done at night, sometimes in the day. Uh, that's probably, I I should just say, I don't, I I live up in Big Rock. I'm not immediately affected by this. Um, but I am quite familiar with the, the location there. So.
Okay, Commissioner Jennings? Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes, I, uh, I asked some, uh, I had a long, well, long discussion with Adrian today about questions, um, and I, uh, I was here when it slid before. I was here when the, the property next to it slid. I was here and I read the studies that showed it went out into the ocean, the slide. And, uh, I saw no mention, well, that's later, that's just disclosure. Thank you.
Commissioner Wetton?
None.
And myself, none. Um, the applicant. Do they have a program here for us?
Um, would you please unmute Ryan Tadaro from GPA Consulting for Caltrans? And, uh, if you'd like to make any initial remarks or introduce the members of your team available to respond to questions. I do see Nancy Pay has her hand raised and she is represented, representing Caltrans. If you'd like to instead unmute her.
Do we have opened the public hearing, correct?
We have. We've opened for the applicant.
Uh, this is Ryan Tadaro, uh, with GPA. We, um, I see that I'm unmuted, so I'll just go ahead and introduce the, uh, Caltrans staff that are here. Uh, we have Nancy Pay, who's the project manager. We also have Anthony, um, who is the environmental planner, and we also have Peter, who is the lead biologist for the project.
Good evening, uh, Commissioners, and thank you very much for hearing this project. I'm, I'm here to answer any question that you have tonight. I don't have anything to present.
Okay. Anybody else on the team?
Yeah, the, the rest of the team also here just to, uh, answer any question that the commissioner may have.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, okay, back to.
Are there any members of the public present in the meeting who wish to comment on this project who have not previously signed up to speak on it? If so, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And seeing none.
Okay, back to us.
Um, if you could pause for just one moment, our applicant Ryan bounced out briefly and he's rejoining the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, Ryan has rejoined the meeting. Um, so if you'd like to move forward.
Okay, great. Uh, back to us, uh, Commissioners. Um, Commissioner Hill?
Okay, um, first, I, I just, as a general matter, I'm, I completely see the necessity of this project. Um, and that said, I just have a lot of questions about the details. And I guess the first one would be, this is a multi-entity project, and this is really for staff, uh, city staff involving multiple utilities, private service providers. It's not just Caltrans and uh, we don't have any of their input or any suggestion of their participation or involvement in the staff report. Are, are they not collaborating on this? And what, what, why is it that we don't need to see that stuff now? Guess that would be for Richard.
Adam.
Yeah.
Adam, could you, um, speak to that? I recall in our meetings that Caltrans have been working with the other agencies and coordinating the relocation of those power lines from one side to another, and that was part of their timeline, I guess we'll call it.
That's correct, yeah. And I'm sure Caltrans can speak to their, uh, coordination with the public utilities in terms of scheduling all the proposed work.
I guess what, what, what I'd be looking for at this moment is just the assurance that they are all on board and and are all in agreement that this is what they want to do.
They're, they're in the meeting, Commissioner Hill, so I'm guessing they're on board.
Yes, I'm talking about Verizon and cable companies and all those other people.
So we, this is Nancy Pay with Caltrans. Yes, we have been working very closely with each of the utility company. I mean, of them for the last two years. They all been waiting very anxiously for this permit so they could move forward in relocation.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, uh, Norm Haney has his hand up. Did we miss him on the, uh, in the public comment?
I was thinking that. I was gonna let Commissioner Hill finish first, and I was gonna ask you guys about having Mr. Haney come in real quick.
Oh, you know what? I have a lot of questions. You should probably let Norm go first.
Okay, uh, Secretary Evans, you wanna unmute Mr. Haney, please?
Yeah, I, I built a lot of soldier piles in the past thirty years. I was wondering what type of mechanism were they going to employ between the piles to prevent the soil from, uh, seeping out from between the, the piles?
Believe it's a lagging, Mr. Haney.
Does he need more of an answer from somebody that was?
I, I, we, we can either from Caltrans or Mr. Spade. Mr. Spade, how, you, assistant, Assistant Public Works Director Spade, can you help us with that?
Uh, as far as the details on what that is, it, I, I don't know that it's a lagging as much as a, I believe it's a steel, steel barrier.
Okay.
But, uh, there, there is a, uh, a membrane in there that would prevent the soil from loading between the piles.
Okay. And answers that, that's good. Mr. Haney, uh, we got that, I believe?
You have Lauren Doyle wanting to comment on that.
Uh, yes. Lauren, please.
You need to unmute her.
Uh, I was just gonna say, it's a Seacant pile wall. It means that the piles themselves form a barrier. So, pretty much what, uh, Assistant Public Works Director Spade stated.
Okay, great. Um, I think we're good there, and I think Mr. Haney got his answer. Commissioner Hill, I guess, go ahead with whatever you're gonna ask.
Okay, yeah, um, one would hope that we expect the highway to last here for hundreds of years in some form, um, or so I'm, I'm wondering why the sea rise has been evaluated for only seventy-five years. We ask that of a hundred years of new residences. Is this, does Caltrans get some legal exemption? That's, that, that's really a legal question, and then I guess maybe also legal that, that they're using an anticipated sea rise of six point two feet, not the eight and a half that we normally ask of residential applicants. Why, why are we using seventy-five years and not, uh, trying to be doing something more long-term for the highway?
Who's that directed to, Commissioner Hill?
That would, that would be for somebody from Caltrans.
Would you unmute Ms. Pay?
I, I don't have an answer to that. I can go back and ask our, um, hydraulic, but I'm sure we, we follow whatever the latest policy that require us.
Okay, and I guess related to that, I had the concern that with rising sea level within the next hundred years or so, there will be segments of PCH increasingly needing repair. And is it Caltrans' plan? And it seems like it is that each, yeah, every time there is some little thing, these are gonna be addressed in an ad hoc temporary emergency basis. So over time, we're gonna get many more of these sort of U-shaped zones where suddenly we have to fix the highway and all the utilities need to be pushed back over to the other side of the highway, increasing the length of those, those water pipes and, uh, so forth. And i- is there not some bigger plan for, uh, addressing, you know, say a quarter a mile at a time? Or some, some bigger units, so we're not just creating over time this little ad hoc cell-by-cell approach to repair? Is there, is there a long-term plan?
As a department, yes, we do. I, I am, there's a study about sea rise and everything that's still ongoing. I, I can't speak to that specific which is, uh, being discussed with climate change and the, the new policy that we're doing. But this project Pacific, it's trying to protect this section of the roadway.
So we're, okay, so we're not really looking ahead that far. We're just focusing on this one spot.
Right, because there's an, uh, in, uh, immediate emergency, I mean, immediate need to fix this roadway, make sure that it won't revolve any further.
Mm-hmm. Okay, now, we're, we're talking about, uh, the portion that's directly beneath the nineteen eighty-three landslide, which was, looks to be, have been fairly well remediated, the way they cut it back and, uh, so forth. There are sections of that on each side that haven't been cut back. And it, it seems to me if we're trenching directly at the toe of that slide to putting all the utilities on the other side of the street, that's might be what you would do if your intent was to try to get that slide to come down. Um, so, and this is something maybe Lauren can address or, or Caltrans. Uh, is there any hazard at all in doing trenching right immediately at the toe of the slide on the other side of the highway?
I'm gonna answer that real quick. I'm pretty sure the toe of this whole big rock slide all the way over to my old project, the Tuna Canyons, way to hell out there in the ocean. This is not the toe, but Lauren, go ahead and give us an answer if you would, please.
Well, that, that is one answer. You're right about that.
Ms. Doyle, are you, okay. I think that was, I think I gave an answer.
There we go. Okay, now, now I'm unmuted. Okay, so first of all, this is one nine seven six eight PCH, correct? That means that this is west, east of the Big Rock Mesa landslide proper. I understand, I know that there was another slide that was related to the cliffs above PCH that failed, right? I drove by it, right? So I understand this, what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Toe of that, that was more like a rock fall and not your classic kind of what I would call circular or block-based failure plane which towed out under PCH.
Right.
Okay, uh, so I, whatever temporary stability is required for any trenching below five feet will be addressed in the building plan check stage. So if there is shoring needed, that will be required with respect to, so, so I just wanna add one more comment with respect to the larger issue of Caltrans and the California Coastal Commission discussing climate change, sea level rise, whether they used seventy-five years or a hundred years. Caltrans is on a faster cycle of project review. And, and you can find this, look at the policies for public infrastructure that are posted by the California Coastal Commission in which they discuss at length and in detail upfront. and in detail upfront, the high-level coordination they are doing with Caltrans. And that is actually reflected in Caltrans increasing sea level rise evaluations as we look at the projects that are coming through Malibu. So I just wanted to reassure Commissioner Hill that that is, that what Nancy Pay said is true, that is being discussed at a higher level, and it is being looked at on a larger scale, although this project does not talk about that.
I, I yield for a moment for John's, thank you, Lauren, for, for, John has his hand up sort of insistently.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on that recently, and I can't give you the address. A similar project went before the Coastal Commission. And they approved the project that said that Caltrans had to design a new project because that one would not last more than twenty years. And because of sea rise. And so they're not that loose on approving these things. And there is a major problem there. If you look at the Google map above this slide, it has, it has, it's not just rockfall. It was terraced, and it's connected to Big Rock Slide by a canyon. And, and you can see where the slide starts. So.
It is, it is, I will say, it is not, it has not been mapped as, and it is not geotechnically or mechanically connected to the Big Rock Mesa Slide. It may be adjacent to it geographically, but it has not been connected to by any technical papers or studies to the Big Rock Mesa Slide. The mechanics may be related, but is not the same.
But, and to be clear.
Be, my question would be, if this has a slippage at the top of the slide, which means it's not directly just rockfall, and it's been terraced, and it was a huge slide, huge, okay? I know people remember having to stop on the highway. Has any study been done? For example, one of the, one of the slides along there goes seven hundred feet to, out to sea. Has any study been done on what the, what the slide situation is at the concrete? The shockcrete level, because shockcrete's not gonna hold anything now. Has anybody looked at, is it moving or is it not, et cetera?
Commissioner Maza, there is no information that has been presented that shows that there is movement across PCH at this location similar to what people, anybody has possibly postulated at Big Rock Mesa. It is not connected mechanically. I understand your question, and, and I'm not saying it's not something to wonder about, but what I'm saying is, this is a wall that is going in to support the fill and the road base. There is no evidence that there is any slide that comes underneath the road. You would have noticed it if you've driven across the Tuna Canyon section. If there's any movement all across PCH, you notice it. The road gets wavy and bumpy. You see the lines crossing. Anybody who's driven across any slides in Malibu, it's, it's readily recognizable. Now, has anybody done any stability analysis from the top of that slope down across and underneath PCH? No, they have not. If that's the question you're asking, it was not required. What they are doing is improving the situation there by installing a CCAN pile, which is, will add additional stability to the road.
No, the only reason I brought this up is what Craig asked is, why do you underground when you could have it overground like everywhere else? And you don't have to worry about that.
I, I don't disagree with you, but, but we will be asking that question in building plan check depending on, since we have not seen any undergrounding plans yet, we will ask that question in building plan check and address that in building plan check from a stability standpoint. That is a requirement.
Okay, back to Craig.
Yeah, okay. Uh, let's put a pin in that one, and I'll keep moving. Rincon recommends limiting lane closures between nine PM and six AM. I don't think that's realistic, as, as somebody who's a bit of a night owl, and I do my shopping at night. I'm, I'm out on the highway often in the evening. And I think that it, it'd be more realistic to go from ten PM to five AM because at nine PM, there's still traffic on the highway. If you, if that was your cutoff time, then pretty much every night that you'd be doing work there, you'd already be creating a backup behind that with, with having only one lane. And likewise, the six AM, I think there's a fairly numerous contingent of people in Malibu who work downtown and they leave home at five AM to drive to commute to downtown without any traffic. So if you are still working to six AM, you're gonna be catching all those commuters, those early commuters. So I'm, I'm really skeptical about the timeframe that they've mentioned, and I, I don't know that Rincon based it on anything other than, well, you know, we wanna keep it limited to nighttime hours. I, I think you, you need to widen that an hour on each end of that spectrum.
Let me, let me help you with traffic control, Commissioner Hill. So they start, they'll start putting out the traffic control about eight forty, and they'll start closing lanes about that time. And then by nine o'clock, they will be able to go to work. This is just like working during the daytime.
Yeah.
So then, the cones all have to be picked up at six. They're not picking up at six. They're done at six. Everybody's off the road. The lane changes have all been made for the daytime traffic. That's all in place by six o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, and I, I agree. I understand that. And if you do it at those timings, you'll have backups most evenings and most mornings.
So if you, if you start yanking away a couple hours every day, and you do this over the period of time it's gonna take to do this repair, you've just added a considerable amount of time to the job. So keep that in mind as well.
Yeah, it would be adding ten or fifteen percent, I would think. And then with respect to noise, we, we've proposed a hybrid plan, which I think is good. I, I wonder, and there's also discussion from Rincon about compensation for residents. I don't see any discussion of the impacts on the residents, other than they talk about, there's a technical construction noise memorandum that talks about leaks, that basically the integrated DBA measurements over time and average noise estimates. And I know something about acoustics and noise, and I know that these numbers are problematic. What they're using are highway noise models from the Federal Highway Administration. But we, here we have, average noise levels aren't gonna help us. There, the average noise will be fine for a lot of these residents, except maybe the very closest ones. But you're talking about the transient noise impacts, any of those loud sounds, we're gonna be affecting like people within a thousand feet either way probably at times. So I, I'm just really concerned that we'd be taking care of those, those neighbors. It seems like there's a lot in the noise study where Rincon is using language like appears reasonable without really analyzing it any further. And, and, you know, I'm not saying don't do the project, but take care of people. Like, for example, they talk about putting up acoustic blankets. And you've got that big cliff face with rocky reflective surfaces, so they would have to be shielding the project acoustically on all four sides for that to make any difference, really. I don't know how you do that, because you've got materials coming and going. So you, it, it, that doesn't seem really practical. I think you're gonna have to take care of the neighbors really well and put them up, give them vouchers. Otherwise, this is gonna be a living nightmare for anybody who lives close to that place.
Okay, Commissioner Hill, I'm gonna ask, Mr. Toderos had his hand up for a minute, and then I'll go to Ms. Pay after that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out, Commissioner Hill had asked about sea level rise. I just wanted to make point that Caltrans is in compliance with coastal commission guidance on that. They've been courting, courting with the coastal commission throughout the process. And we'll be, be going before the coastal commission for a coastal development as well, and in December, and they're recommending approval of the project. So just wanted to point that out in regards to sea level rise.
Okay, Ms. Pay, you have something you're probably gonna answer to Mr. Hill?
Yes, Mr. Hill concerned about the, the CCAN power construction. The CCAN power construction would be done mainly during daytime, not at night. So I just want to share that.
So that, in terms of noise activity at night, like, how would this compare to the noise activity of, I don't know if you're familiar with the project happening, Public Works down near Moonchada's Restaurant right now, where the water main broke last week?
I'm not familiar with that project.
Okay, they've been working at night on that, and I live up the canyon more than five hundred feet, well, whatever, it's about five hundred feet. And it, it's been really loud and troublesome last, right?
So, so for some of the utility relocation, there, there will be some nighttime. So we've been working with the company. They will try to do as much day work as they can. Those are the, the thing that we've been using with the company, utility company, but the project itself, the CCAN power itself will be done during daytime. And for night work, nighttime, like we've shared before, if there's any resident that they feel that they cannot take the noise during the nighttime, during utility relocation, we do offer and put them up in hotel.
Okay.
An option for them.
That's good. And then what about, it looks like there's roughly ten houses, maybe fewer, but a certain number that will be directly affected by the digging in front of them in terms of their access to their properties. They, they may have difficulty getting in and out at times. There'll be construction vehicles parked in front, you know, heavy equipment. What, what do we do for the people who are their, their immediate property access is restricted?
They, they should not have any problem with access. We're, we're working with the utility company to, we are working with the company to tell them that they should not be blocking access to any of these resident. So we have hosted two public meeting outreach in this, early this year with the public, with the resident live along there. And also with the larger community in Malibu. Most of them, most of them recommend at night work, to be honest. They didn't want the traffic to, to be the issue.
Well, and certainly most Malibu residents would say work at night. I'm just mainly more concerned now about the immediate resident, the people who live there within earshot.
Correct. And, and sorry, go ahead.
And so are you, you're representing that the people who actually live very close to that don't have a concern or would actually prefer it at night?
We did a community outreach just to that group. Only a few show up for the meeting. Unfortunately, not all of them did. But they, the two that show up that said they will talk to the neighbor about it, so that there isn't any other way for us to reach out to them. We did as much as we can, put flyer, invited them to both meeting, do what we call a polling also after the meeting with all the community, and that's what we find out.
So of the people within a thousand feet of there, two showed up?
I don't remember exactly, but the bigger community, we did the polling of night work versus day work. We got about ninety-eight return that took the poll. Majority wanted night work.
Okay. What, what about staging areas? There is, uh, there's a little bit of discussion about, in the staff report, about where materials and equipment won't be staged. But then there's a large quantity of K-rails specified, but where, where will that stuff be staged?
So on the north side, close to the hill, that area will be blocked out. That's where the trench will be. So within that area, they can store their material in there, the pipe and thing, until they are put in the ground. As far as the cable, they, they have to bring it in, in the truck every night. They will not be stored on site.
And then there's a requirement that says that there will be no contractor parking on either side of the road. So where do, where do all the contractors park?
So when we talk to the utility company, when they come in, they, they are, all them are driving their own equipment. So they, the equipment are being used, the truck, where they have the, what you call the, the rim of cable and everything. So they not driving in the old car. Everything that they drive in is equipment that they need to use on sites. So they will be part where the lane closer be used on, on site as they work.
And then in twenty nineteen, this commission approved a project for the parcel immediately to the southeast, to the east, really, that also has shotcrete on it. And at that time, we approved it, we heard no evidence that there was an issue with, with any of this area. But now I'm, I'm wondering, how does this, if, affect that property, if at all? Do we, have you been talking to the contractor or the owner of that property to interface with them?
Is this the one right? Let's see, if you're looking from the ocean side on the left side?
If you're looking from the ocean, it would be on the right side. It's, it was, the project was, the applicant was Vidas Matari.
Okay, I don't know. I could check up on that. I, I don't have an answer to that immediately. I'm sure some of the staff probably, we have been talking to both side of the property.
Okay.
Because he's in the project, so they were this project.
And then, well, and then speaking of the other side, on the, the west side, or I guess in Caltrans frame, you call that the north. They, there's a scenic view overlook there. And you, the proposal says that it will be surrounded by fencing, so it's inaccessible. The report also says there will be no effect on scenic resources, but I think both of those can't be true. If you can't get to the viewpoint, then you affected the view. So this may be more for city staff, but is that any sort of issue that, that we're blocking off of public access there?
I don't think we're putting up any fencing. The only thing that we're putting up in, in lieu of the existing cable right now is a a barrier on top of that CCAN wall to prevent, to prevent public from falling, but they, it's not tall enough to prevent any viewing.
Page nine of the staff report says the adjacent view overlook will be surrounded by fencing. So I don't know, but if there's a, probably not that many people go there anyway, so it may not be a big issue.
And Commissioner Hill, while people are working, that's probably the safe thing to do, so people don't go by there and get next to the equipment or, and all that.
Oh, you, you mean during construction, yes.
Yeah.
But, but not afterward.
Right, okay. And then finally, looking at the, the signage plans, you've got, during construction, you're proposing twenty-eight road signs within that short distance. And that's on sheet CS one, for those keeping score. Plus additional signs on other sheets. I, I'm wondering if there's just any way to streamline the barrage of signage that will show up. Like, for example, there are right now three signs about bicycles in each direction, so six signs about bikes alone among that. Could that be combined, condensed into one sign, or just, it seems like it's just gonna be a welter of different signs and information that might be confusing for people. If there's a way to sort of streamline that, that would be helpful.
All right, let me answer that real quick, and then I'm gonna go to Assistant Public Works Director Spade. No way. Commissioner Hill, no way. These guys are gonna sign us to death because it's in their roadmap. Assistant Public Works Director Spade, go ahead.
Thank you, Dennis. Yeah, signage, safety's number one priority, and this is an emergency project.
Well, and I agree, and it's kind of like how they found out when they have those projects where it's like, turn on your headlights for the next ten miles. But they turn out to actually be less safe because the oncoming headlights are distracting. So sort of a similar thing here. The more different stimulus and everything, the more people may just be like, whoa, wait, what's going on here?
Go ahead.
So there will be, there will be signage approved. And then if there's adjustments that need to be made in the field, because it becomes distracting or blocking, it will be adjusted. The signs can be taken down. Additional signs can be put up. But the number one factor in all of this is safety.
Right.
It has to be. Now, I also know that we've met probably a dozen times in the last two years on, on this with Caltrans and all of the utility contractors going over things from the schedule. From my recollection of that, of those meetings, the ability to do work. the ability to do work at night will reduce the schedule significantly, not not 10 or 15%, but more like close to 40%.
No, no, I'm saying if you, if you, instead of starting at 9:00 PM, if you closed it down at 10:00 PM, you know, so I'm I'm saying you could still, there'd still be a good six, what would it be, seven hours each night that you could still work?
I I think it 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 plays a major factor in their ability to get the work done.
Yeah. All right, I I will leave it there for now at least. Thank you.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Yeah, just a last couple of questions. I'm wondering why we're having six cuts across the highway for utilities instead of a couple. It seems like every utility has its own trench in a different spot across the highway. Then they all join up. And then they all do another three further down the highway. So that's six cuts in the highway, which is going to be, unless they do them all the same day, which I doubt because utilities tend to show up in different times. Six major closures. There's a reason for that.
I I have that answer, but I'm gonna let Ms. Pay answer that for you, Vice Chair.
It is because each company had to join back to the existing, which is on the the side of the highway. So when they relocate, they have to join back to each end. So there's two cut for each company. We actually have one for the SCE, which is the electrical itself. That's two, and then one for SCG. So that's two more. The other one is actually for all the telecom company. There's four of them going into the same cut, the same two cut. So we we did put all the telecom company all together in one trench. But the power and the gas has to be their separate trench. They cannot go together. I hope that answered your question.
Okay, the power has to, okay. Once they go across the highway, are the telephone poles, when they go underground, are the telephone poles that used to be there going to be removed?
Two of them, I believe, will be removed. The the two that going across the segment that connecting yet, I I believe it will be removed.
So at that point, then, these houses would get underground utilities. And there's, it looks like there's one, two, three, five, six, seven. Is is Caltrans going to pay for the connection to those houses?
I I think with the houses, they're still joining yet through overhead. It's the segment that between the house that can move over to the other side.
Well, for example, the so so number black is number so Frontier is going to come in at between two and three. And there doesn't appear to be anything between them and one. Those four houses there. You're saying you're going to come back across the highway, put the telephone poles back up and then have a connection from the telephone poles?
They they are a couple of telephone poles still there, so I I don't recall exactly where it is. So any connection that they will get, yes, we do pay for, but I don't remember that we impacting any house residential connection. It's just the main that being relocated.
Certainly, Vidas has a CDP for his parcel, so he'd have a connection right in that zone.
Right. If you're concerned about connection and who's paying for it, if we impact them, we do pay for it.
Okay, and so we're going we're going above ground on the south side of the highway and underground on the north side of the highway. And I know I asked this question before, as far as undergrounding. Is there a reason why, other than gas, it needs to be below ground? I mean, it seems, it seems funny that why we would go underground for that length of time, that length of the highway. Maybe not the total of the slide in the slide. And then come up above ground right across the street.
In order to go on the other side to be on overhead, the pole has to take additional right away from that hill, which we don't have right away for. The pole cannot be put in where the flat area is. It it need we just don't have the right way there for to put the pole and to to have protected for traffic safety. So it's better to go underground for them. And I believe the city of Malibu also like thing to be underground. So for that reason, also, we we had approved a plan to go that way. We have to pay much more to go underground. So so we we're just trying to stay in that plane to be consistent with what the city wanted also, and also because we don't have the right way for the pole to sit on.
Now, when you go, when you already have the poles there and you're underground on the north side of the highway, is there a reason not to go from pole to the other side of the highway and then underground?
She just said that they they can't put a pole there because of the right of way. So they're going to underground everything, which is such a much better system. They'll still have transformers probably on the poles to feed the three phase that's got to go under. So you've got a lot of things going on here with this electrical. So by doing the, hang on, just by doing the underground, you you're making a much, you're making a safer project for everybody. So that way, these guys can work across the street. It it's just the only way to go, Commissioner or Vice Chair Mazza. You can't add another pole.
And it's done to the north side of the street, but you also have to realize that directly adjacent to this property is the Caltrans wall to hold up the hill. It's a lot wider than telephone pole. Okay, there's plenty of room for that. It's there. It's a giant thing. So I I just, I hate to have this close the highway down six times. Okay. That's about it.
Okay, Commissioner Wetton, you have anything?
No.
Commissioner Jennings?
No.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Great.
An amendment, if I could.
I'll second it.
Well.
Go ahead, Vice Chair Mazza.
I believe Craig is correct on the hours. The public is involved in this, it's a long project, going to be a long project. And I used to commute at five in the morning, okay? But there are plenty of people there later. I think Craig's correct, you move in an hour and you take care of a couple thousand people every day.
So your motion would be to to call the hours 10 to 5 rather than 9 to 6?
Correct.
I I if you do 9 to 6, you're going to have backups most nights and most mornings.
Yeah, so whether that's accepted, I don't know.
I I think Caltrans is good at this stuff, and they know what they're doing.
Well, this was, this was proposed by Rincon, so.
Caltrans hired them.
Okay. And and remember, guys, it's not our road. The only thing I would ask, and this is, this is kind of a big deal. I noticed Caltrans down going to San Diego. When they do the the lane changes, they use the color orange on the striping. So you've got a black stripe with an orange in between on the 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 stripe itself. It allows you to see your lane change better. On the workout here by me at Trancas at the bridge, early in the morning when the sun hits, you don't know what lane you're in when you're headed eastbound. You know pretty much where you are, but even though it's usually pretty safe and because we know the area really well. But for those that don't, you don't know what lane you're in. That needs to be restripped out here. Now, you know, I've called a couple of people myself about this. We haven't had anything, I want to see it repaved on the lane change because these guys are going to be here a lifetime now fixing the piles. But on this area, we need to remember when that sun comes up in the morning and we're all headed east, it's tough. And you can't, there's a, there's a point in there where you just plain oh, can't see. And so I think the striping is going to be very important on 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 this project so people know where they're headed. Ms. Pay, go ahead.
Just want to share that our lane closure are based on traffic data. We don't just do it arbitrarily, we base on traffic volume. When there's no backup, that's why the hour are set based on those. Just want to share them.
Okay, Commissioner Hill, one thing and then we'll take a vote.
Yeah, just to say, I think the majority of Malibu citizens would rather this go on a month longer and not have backups in the evening and the morning. So.
Okay, I believe we're ready for a roll call. Recording Secretary Evans, please.
And just to clarify, Chair Smith, were you requesting an amendment to conditions when you brought up the striping, or was that just common for Caltrans?
It's, it's, it's something I think that matters, whether they do it or not. You know, it's, it's their road. I think it's very important that they take a look at that. You know, it'd be great if they would. So I guess, I guess it would be, it's great striping for early morning travel.
So is that accepted?
I don't know, it's, how do you guys feel?
Well, can I?
Go ahead.
Chair, yeah, Chair Smith. You know, you point well taken on the Trancas Bridge. I I agree with you on that, it's very hard to tell where you are as you're going by those K rails through the project. But but the project before us, they're going to be switching it between four, two lanes each way and one lane each way. So I'm not sure how they stripe it. You know, when they're, when they're switching from two back to one between night and day. I don't know if they're going to do that with cones, maybe Ms. Pay can elaborate.
Yes, they will be using cone to do that. Anything through a shift like that, it will be called, it will not be through striping.
Okay, so are you going to be shifting cones 24 hours a day till we're done, is this correct? Or delineators, I should say?
Twice a day, right?
Ms. Pay?
Sorry, I was unmute, yes. It most likely is the cone that they will be using to move the traffic back and forth.
Okay, very good. Vice Chair Mazza, real quick.
I just, is this going to happen during the rainy season? Has that, has that been restricted or not?
No, it it, they they are allowed to work throughout, but when it's rain, they don't work. No contract, they work during raining.
Okay.
Assistant Public Director, Public Works Director Spade?
Yes, I am. The the city and Caltrans has a memorandum of understanding as far as the lane closures during what time, what months, what weeks throughout the year, throughout the days. So it's not restricted to the rainy season or whatnot. It is, they do have to follow certain patterns during the summer months and then other patterns later, but that's all been documented and it's an agreement that's in place that we should maintain since, since we've been doing it for for decades.
Right, and this contract that usually do not work while it's raining.
Right. And we have, there's a SWIP plan too, so they've got, there's a whole bunch of stuff going on there, but they'll take care of that. Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, do we not have on the table a motion to vote on whether we want daily traffic jams? John proposed something.
John proposed an amendment.
That was actually, oh, okay, I believe, I thought that was the amendment that Commissioner Wetton rejected previously.
Well, so, and so, yeah, so I I apologize, I I took it as a friendly amendment as well, but if that's wrong, Vice Chair Mazza, and you would like to make that motion, and and Commissioner Hill, you would like to second it, we can't have a roll call on it.
I did second, so yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Got it.
Okay.
This is a deal breaker to me.
Okay, so.
And so, yeah, the motion on the floor is on the amendment to change and to, correct me if I'm wrong, to change it to 10 to 5, correct, Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Got it.
Now, did we ever get a second on the first?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Um, so.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yeah, I have a question about this motion. Public Works Assistant Director just said that there is a protocol in place for when the lanes can be closed and how how the fritschy takes place and all the rest of it. Is is this subject, the the hours that are proposed either way, is it, is it covered by the protocol? And I guess my second question is, should we condition the project to abide by the protocol that is currently existing between the city of Malibu and and Caltrans?
And to answer the the question, as Adam had presented, any any nighttime work is at the approval of city manager. Other than that, the the hours that are projected for this project do fit within the parameters of the protocol, yes.
Has the city manager approved it?
They haven't, they they have not requested yet.
All right, so if I hear what you're saying, it is that the protocol that exists between the MOU, whatever it is that exists between the city and Caltrans would allow the closures that are proposed in this project?
Correct.
Okay. And and the second question would be of Patrick, the planning commission has the authority to dictate hours, correct?
I would say for this project, yes, if you would like to make a recommendation to modify the hours, that would be appropriate. I don't want to say, speak authoritatively on any hours for any project throughout the city.
Okay, so we can vote on this, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton?
Yeah, I I I thought if I understood Ms. Pay correctly, she said that Caltrans adjusts the the hours based on the track, traffic flow. So it's not, to me, it sounds like a non-issue. So I I I think, you know, we're speculating a little bit that it's, you know, the trap is going to be this or it's going to be that. I I I don't understand why we don't let Caltrans do their job.
Well, because it's not, according to the last statement by our city Public Works Division, it's not Caltrans that decides, it's the city manager.
That's just whether to allow work at night.
Yeah, Caltrans out in field, let's take a vote, let's, let's do Vice Chair Mazza's his amendment and see where everybody goes. So Recording Secretary Evans, please.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
No.
Commissioner Wetton?
No.
Chair Smith?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay.
Would you like me to call the original motion?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Wetton?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Unfortunately, no.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I move, we take a break.
Uh, yeah, I can probably do that. Nine o'clock, 9:02, 9:03, 9:03. 9:03. Nine oh three. Looks like all we need is Director Malika, if necessary.
There he is.
We have Senior Planner Bobbitt with us. Okay. We're ready, gentlemen and ladies.
Can I ask a quick, quick question of Patrick? Are we, am I being heard?
I can, I can hear Commissioner Hill.
Oh.
Chair Smith.
Uh, go ahead, uh.
Yeah, just, just, I don't, you'll probably say no, but just informally or formally, either way. If somebody wanted to appeal that last item, could we clarify a point of what was just in the resolution? I mean, I, I, I think we voted based on, on incorrect information, so I don't know.
Terms of, when, when you say what's in the resolution, do you mean?
What, what we. I guess we, we, we can't talk about it now. I, I just, I felt like something was said, a representation was made that was inaccurate and we voted based on that. So that's all.
Okay, we are on to. New public hearings. And, okay, we're showing C star, uh.
You will.
Item five A.
Yeah, five A.
Wild.
Wildlife, so coastal, coastal development permit number nineteen dash zero four four. Minor modification number twenty two zero dash zero zero three. Demolition permit number. Twenty two dash zero two four and code violation number twenty two dash zero six four. An application for a remodel of an existing single family residence and associated development. Staff report, please.
Yes, um, I just wanted to see, Alex, do you, are you able to, there we go.
There we go.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Chair Smith and members of the Planning Commission. The item you have before you tonight is for coastal development permit number nineteen zero four four. Which is inclusive of minor modification number twenty two zero two four. And demolition permit number twenty two zero two four. And this is for the property located at six, seven, seven, seven Wildlife Road. Next slide, please. Pictured here is a vicinity map and aerial photograph of the project site. Um, and the surrounding area. The project is located on the western side of Wildlife Road. And is currently developed with an existing single family residence. Pool house, tennis court and associated development. According to the Los Angeles County Tax Assessor, the property was developed with a single family residence, which was constructed in nineteen seventy eight. Next slide, please. The scope of work for the project includes an interior and exterior model of the existing single family residence. The conversion of the existing pool house to a guest house. The demolition of eighteen percent of the ex, existing pool house. A hundred and three square foot addition to the existing, um, pool house, which would be converted to the guest house. Hardscape and landscape. And a new OWTS. The discretionary requests for the project are as follows. A minor modification to reduce the required side yard setback by twenty percent. And this will be allowed for the hundred and three square foot addition that is being proposed. And demolition permit to demolish, demolish the existing tennis court slides that were installed without the benefit of permit. Um, as a point of clarification from the staff report, um, the, there is no exterior demolition proposed for the single family residence. Um, just the eighteen percent demolition that I mentioned for the existing pool house. Um, the work for the single family residence just consists of an interior remodel and change. And a small forty six square foot landing at the rear of the property. Next slide, please. Pictured here is the property site plan. Um, I've outlined the proposed one hundred and three square foot addition, um, to the pool house in red. Um, and that area will show you in a little bit in a few slides, um, with the minor modification as well. Next slide, please. Here is the demolition of the pool house proposed. Um, they're proposing eighteen percent demolition. And previously, a previous administrative planner review proposed a twelve percent demolition. Totalling thirty percent, um, which is below the fifty percent threshold for demolition of the existing structure. Next slide, please. Um, pictured here is the floor plan for the proposed guest house. Which includes that one hundred and three square foot addition that I previously mentioned. Next slide, please. Pictured here are the elevations for the proposed guest house, um, which will not exceed eighteen feet in height. Um, and does, do not exceed fourteen feet in height total. Next slide, please. Pictured here is the new OWTS proposed for the site. Um, as a part of the septic system upgrade, that will include a new three thousand six hundred and thirty four gallon tank. Reactive septic tank, excuse me, seepage pits and three, um, seepage pits for future expansion. Next slide, please. Pictured here are the site photographs. The photograph to the left shows the existing pool house. And the area of the proposed addition is essentially infilling that area you can see by those front slider doors. Um, as you can see as well, there's an existing side yard wall. And the addition will be inside of that wall, but still requires the minor modification in order to meet the setback requirements. Um, to the right, um, shows pictures of the existing tennis lights, which are proposed to be demolished. And we're subject of code violation number twenty two sixty four. And the homeowner is proposing to demolish these lights. And there was existing poles, however, they had switched the fixtures. Um, and therefore were non-compliant and needed to demolish those to remedy the code violation. Next slide, please. In conclusion, uh, staff recommends the adoption of resolution twenty two sixty nine. Approving coastal development permit number nineteen forty four. Um, as a friendly amendment to the resolution, um, staff would. Would like to include the following condition, just to be very clear that no exterior demolition is proposed for the single family residence as a part of this application. Um, the condition would read, this application does not propose demolition of exterior walls of the single family residence. And therefore none is approved. And that concludes staff's presentation. I believe the homeowner and applicant are available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, great, uh. The applicant.
Would you like to take disclosures first?
disclosures, yes, yes, disclosures, Vice Chairman Mazza.
Uh, I'm familiar with the property and I was at the hearing for the property directly behind it. Actually, I participated in that hearing. Other than that, none.
Commissioner Hill.
Uh, I was unclear about a few things. I emailed Jessica and she was very helpful in making the clarifications.
Oh. I did my catering today about the project.
Uh, Commissioner Jennings. You did. Commissioner Jennings, you're muted.
Done.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Wetton.
Uh, none.
And none for me. Okay.
Thank you, um, so we do have. The owners for the property, uh, would like to make a few remarks and if anyone else is present in the meeting. And wishes to speak on this item, but has not signed up to speak, please click the raise hand button while they're making their remarks and we'll call to you afterwards. So, uh, we'd like to open mic for Micah Belsberg.
Hi Commissioners, thank you so much, um, for taking the time. And thanks Jessica for all your work with us. And the city staff for working on, on this for so long. Um, we're really excited. For this long awaited date tonight to cover a couple last remaining issues that Jessica presented. Our whole family is excited to move back into the home after over four years of working on this with the city. So we're just happy to see a light at the end of the tunnel and really appreciate the time that you guys dedicate towards reviewing this.
Very nice, thank you. Uh, so no speakers?
I need to keep clicking through, but I'm not seeing any at this time. No other speakers.
Okay, so back to us.
Would you like to close the public comment portion of the hearing?
Yes, we'll close the public comments portion of the hearing.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Hill.
Yeah, uh, two quick comments and one question. First, this, this is a minor modification. I made some noise at a recent meeting about how, you know, we were just kind of pushing the envelope too far and. This, we're looking at a difference of a few feet in the spot where the existing structure is at least as close to the property line as what is being proposed. I think in my view, this is what is foreseen by a minor modification. So, so good. And also, um, just to observe that this is an archaeologically sensitive area, but they're not excavating much at all. So that's not a concern. My one question. Is, um. It's, it, the, the demolition permit for the court, for the court lighting code violation. Is subject to approval of the CDP. Which sort of implies that. If you put up illegal tennis courts light, lights, you could keep them if your proposed application then wasn't approved. So I, I don't, I don't see the nexus between. Why, why should the demolition permit be conditioned on approval of the CDP?
So a demolition permit is typically tied to a development permit. We, we don't issue demolition permits like minor modifications on their own. And so since there was a open project, we combined basically everything into that one project. If this should be denied. The tennis court lights still need to be addressed, in which case, uh, we probably. The tennis court lights still need to be addressed, in which case we probably do that ministerially with a. Demolition permit, an APR to condition their removal. And then issue a demolition permit number at the same time, but it's mainly here because we tried to just group everything. Into one application.
So it, it, there was sort of an implication just now from Jessica, maybe I heard wrong, but. That the pre-existing fixtures before they replaced them would have been okay still, if, if, or. This would be a code violation regardless.
Okay, my understanding was that they were, I don't know when they were installed, that they were existing non-conforming. Prior and then they removed them, so in removing them, they essentially lose that non-conformity in reinstalling them, and so they're no longer compliant. Just why they were subject to the code violation.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, no one's more dark skied than me, but I also just seems like. We don't want to just unduly be taking things away, but yeah, good, okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yeah, I am. Went over a couple of things with Adrian today that. Mystified me. One is. The rear of this property, which is not indicated anywhere on any drawing or not a single word of this report. Is a flood control channel. It's got a major. Probably five-foot drainage pipe between Bonneface and this channel, the house behind it. Had to set back from that. And you'll notice when you look at the aerials, there's a green stripe that runs right down the boundaries. It floods, goes directly to the ocean. And. I don't see anything wrong with what's been done. Except what I'll mention again, but. It kind of mystifies me how we could miss something that major of a public work. You couldn't drain Porthead Bonzel or Fern Hill without using that drainage channel. So. That I think we should consider and. We didn't get a landscaping plan in our packet, and so if you get out the magnifying glass. And look really closely at. At what you can read. Part of what the biologist signed off on was no non-native plants. Well, the only one I could identify because the print is so small. Is a Mediterranean olive tree. It also says that those olive trees already exist. When you look at the aerial. And the plants, they don't show them. But if you look at the plan, there's a little word, already exist. They don't. So. What, what our conditions say and. What the biological review statement says, that you can't have. Non-native plants more than fifty feet from the house. We've got a whole orchard. Plus possibly. Many other plants, because you can't read the landscape plan, so. I'm going to propose. That. When, when we make the motion that a compliant landscape plan be submitted. Because this is directly within three feet of a drainage that goes directly to the ocean. And olive trees and those kind of trees take pesticides. Now, we have a statement in here that says. Can't use pesticides, but that's how you keep tree alive down there. So that's one thing that bothered me now. There's a large round structure shown in the, when you look at Google Maps right next to the stream. I was told today that there's probably a trampoline. But I'd like to find out maybe from the applicant what it is, because it's rather large. From a satellite. So. Maybe Micah could tell us what that is.
Hi John, yes, this is my two boys trampoline.
Okay, it's not a permanent structure, no problemo. Now. I, Jessica, I, I didn't get a chance to read or find the prior CDP, but. Or prior CDPs, but are the. Timber stairways. The, we, at the, the end of the, the rear of the house. Have they been permitted?
Are, just.
On, 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 you know. Ecological reasons for the stream, because those streams are tested.
Sure, are you referring to the stairs? I will double check, are you referring?
There's a set of stairs that look like they're.
The west side?
Barely new on the ocean side, and then there's, there's all the. The grading of the stair step of about ten different steps down the side of the hill. Going across the property behind the house.
Terracing.
Terracing, correct. Have those been approved? And are they treated?
I will double check if I can find any additional permits for those. I do know that the stairs that you were previously referring to were approved under APR eighteen forty-seven. The ones on the eastern side of the property, but I will look and confirm that we have a permit.
Approved as, as Chris out or treated lumber?
I would have to look, I'm sure they were conditioned as such, since the administrative planner view was approved somewhat recently, but I will double check.
Okay. Now, the, on, on the calculation of. I know you stated that we're not looking at the house at all, but. Part of the plans we got have an extensive window and door plan. That unless those windows and doors are exactly the same as the house before, should be counted in the fifty percent. Are they exactly the same as the house before it was, before this application came in or the prior one?
My understanding is that what's included in the plans, there's a note that says not included in the CDP scope. So whatever the changes in the windows and doors were incorporated in the remodel for the administrative planner view. That was approved and calculated and the major remodel agreement was also signed for that under APR.
You know what the percentage of walls replaced were?
Yes, it was forty-six percent.
Okay. So unless anybody has any questions, I'm going to move for approval with the condition that. And a, a, a new landscaping plan be submitted and reviewed by the. Staff and the. Whatever the biological department's called, I got it here.
Biology.
Well, they use a different term, I think. Biology review sheet, it says. It says that, oh, and another thing I would like to mention is. I asked staff today about the water approval. And they said, well. A will serve letter just covers the house, you don't need to worry about the outside. But this, the conditions and the biology review sheet says. That District Twenty-nine must provide landscape water permit. So I assume since that's in the condition, staff will check that when it comes in. But it's not approved yet. Also, so that motion is to approve landscape plan. And including. The fact that. The olive trees listed as existing. Be proven that they were existing, because they're not there. That's my motion. And I'm willing to accept amendments.
I'll second it for discussion. I see Greg Beldsberg's hand is up.
I'm fine, well, it's up to the chairman, whether he opens that.
Hi, it's, it's Mike again, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt here, I just wanted to point out that. The olive trees, John, that you are referring to, they were actually approved in the APR. And I don't have the approval number, I think maybe Jessica, you might have the APR approval number. But those olive trees were, were covered in that.
Okay, but they're in our, the point I'd like to make to staff and. The commission is, there's a condition in here, says you may not put non-native trees in that area. And these are definitely Middle Eastern trees, I looked them up today, they've never been in California in the. The last, you know, until we moved here. They're called. They got it written down here somewhere, but they're, they're European. And so we're violating, it's counted, planning department may have violated their own condition, but it is a condition.
Thank you, just as a quick point of clarification for the record, the approved landscape plan is included in the commission's agenda packet on page fifty-one. And that is stamped by our city biologist Courtney McKeen. I did confer with her prior to this meeting. After some of Commissioner Mazza's questions regarding the olive trees, she did recheck the landscaping plan for conformance with the code. And said that everything was in conformance as well as the olive tree, the location of the three olive trees. That we had, that are being subject of this discussion.
Well, there's a whole orchard being put in, not just three. Okay, and. To sign off on this project. You have to meet the conditions, doesn't matter what she says. You have to meet the conditions and the conditions are, you may not have non-native plants fifty feet from the house. That's a condition. It was already passed. It's in the conditions and it's going to stay in the conditions, so biologist made a mistake.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for, for approval with amendments from Vice Chair Mazza. Do we want to take a quick roll call on this?
Do we have any discussion or any questions?
You've been discussing away, Vice Chair.
Okay.
Vice Chair Mazza? Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
No.
Commissioner Watten?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Now.
Motion carries.
That was easy.
Actually.
I, I'm just. Was it, condition thirty-two that you were referring to, John, as prohibiting non-native plants?
Hang on a second, I just pulled everything apart. Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
No, 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 that's not it, it's. Let's see here. By the way, those trees grow thirty feet high. I gotta find it.
Because I don't see it.
What's a required condition, by the way, but let's see here.
Well, they run from thirty-two to forty-four of the biology conditions.
Well, it's required by the, by the LUP, so I guess I'm adding. I haven't looked at the, there's so many.
You just, didn't you just tell us that specifically that. That the conditions in this that are in this project, in this resolution. Specifically prohibited, non-native plants? Didn't you just say that a few minutes ago?
I might have. Same way that the biologist said that they were legal.
I, I mean, I believe, and, and once again, Vice Chair Mazza, I, I, I've taken down notes of the, of the motion, so I believe we're. Voted on and, and, and adopted by a three-two, so we can likely move on.
I, I'm just referring back to Commissioner Hill's reference that there were misstatements of fact on which we voted.
Totally understood, Commissioner Jennings.
Oh, I got that one, okay. We are on to five B.
Yes.
Coastal development permit number twenty-two zero zero four, site plan and review number twenty-two dash zero one two. An application to amend coastal development permit number eighteen dash zero one four to. Increase the height of the structure and minor exterior improvements. Staff report, please.
Thank you Chair, hello again. As noted, coastal development permit amendment number twenty-two zero zero four and site plan review twenty-two zero one two. At six two eight two C-Star Drive. Next slide, please. So the project is proposing to raise the flat roof above the second unit from eighteen feet to twenty-four feet. And this is what the site plan review is for, per the code. For height above eighteen feet, not to exceed twenty-four feet for flat roofs. Then to raise three hundred and seventy-five square feet of flat roof on the northeast corner from the current eighteen feet. To twenty-three point zero six feet. Raise the top portion of the exterior wall near the northeast corner to eighteen feet. And to raise the basement window height from two feet, five inches to three feet. Next slide, please. Here's an aerial map, just to give you a sense of the, where the property is located. Next slide. And a closer look at the currently vacant site on C-Star Drive. Next slide. So this application is to amend the original approval, which was CDP eighteen dash zero one four. For an eight thousand three hundred and fifty square foot single-family residence with attached garage, including a three thousand eight hundred and. Eight square foot basement and attached seven hundred and eighty-two square foot second unit. Along with a swimming pool and spa. New onsite wastewater treatment system. Decking driveway landscaping retaining walls. And a site plan review for two thousand eight hundred and forty-two cubic yards of remedial grading. Next slide, please. Now, back in, excuse me, March of twenty twenty-two, there was a substantial conformance. Approval related to this original CDP approval. I won't go through all of the scope on the slide here, I'll just point out a few. Reconfigured fire department turnaround from Hammerhead to Circular, approved in conjunction with APR number twenty-one dash zero seven four. And shared with six, six two seven zero C-Star Drive. Revised land, hardscape landscaping and minor grading changes. And on the second unit, a recon, they reconfigured the interior layout, removed an enclosed area from the elevator exit. And added a new upper floor, upper roof deck. Next slide, please. Here's a look at the elevations from the architectural drawings with the areas in red being the ones proposed to increase in height. As noted in the project description. Next slide, please. And this is a rendering provided by the applicant with the original structure in gray and the. Areas in orange being the, the proposed height increase on those two areas of the house. Next slide, please. Here are photos of the story poles that were installed to reflect the proposed change in height on those portions of the roof. Looking north towards the mountains. Next slide. And then looking south towards Pacific, the Pacific Ocean. Next slide, please. So in summary, staff recommends the planning commission approves the proposed project amendment as conditioned. And I believe we have the applicant here, and they're also going to make a presentation. Thank you.
Okay.
So we can open her microphone to clarify, my understanding was that Anna. Madioli and Doug Birch from Virgin Associates were planning to be present. To respond to questions if needed, but let's clarify with Anna if she would like to make her presentation.
Yes, I would like to let Doug start. He just sent me a text, he would like to say, to say something. After he finish, I have a quick presentation about our view study.
Thank you.
Disclosures, please.
Yes, disclosures.
None.
Commissioner.
None.
Commissioner Whitten.
None.
Commissioner Hill.
Three of us heard the original application. I did check on in on base to find the original project plans for reference, did not find them there. I did look back at the twenty nineteen hearing. In which there was lots of emphasis by the applicant about how the project could read as only one story. There was no discussion of roof deck at the time, not in the hearing nor in the staff report. There was discussion about how new flat solar panels would cover the roof. To to be determined in the building plan check phase. There was also a condition to submit a fence plan showing the fencing not enclosing the trail easement. And I don't see that that was ever done. Maybe it was, but we don't have evidence. And those are my disclosures.
I remember sitting in the front row as always when this came through. Okay. We can go with with Anna if she'd like.
Doug, do you want to start?
Yes, yes. Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Yes, this is Doug Burge, the architect for the project and Anna, so project architect. She's going to be making a deeper dive presentation after this. Just wanted to mention a few things. When we originally were contracted for this project. It was for a non-owner user was for a developer that hired us on this vacant lot. And we had processes application, you know, to be as quicker as possible, knowing that, you know, we'd be under eighteen feet. And as a point of clarification, there's always been a second story above the garage, which is the accessory dwelling unit. So that was already approved. The square footage has been approved. The septic system has been approved, you know, the pool, the house, basically in same location. And a few years ago, we were approached by a new buyer and the new buyer is the one who is owning the property right now, and they're the user. And basically, they said they didn't really want to change anything about the floor plan. The floor plan is very, very close to what it was before. But, you know, when you go into eighteen feet, you have an eighteen eight-foot-high garage and eight-foot-high studio above the garage. And so the ceiling heights are pretty diminished. And so this is why we're going into this is to raise the height both of the garage and of the unit above the garage. And at that point. You would walk up, we were always walking up from the outside to get into this unit. So there's a small roof deck. That really no neighbor can see. It's actually tucked back into the roof and Anna will make that presentation. And then the other request was to get a little more ceiling height than the kitchen. The kitchen great room is the main room in the house. And that is the main space. And that's where we would also been requested to make that higher. So there's been a whole team of new people brought on, interior designers, bring contractors on. And so the client is basically asked us to take the house that we designed. Same exact footprint, no change. And it was very adamant about making sure our request for that was was not asked for, no change in bathrooms. Basically, just ask for this additional height. As we also know from the codes. Is that, you know, any increase over eighteen feet up to twenty-four in flat roof case is subject to the approval from the planning director. And the planning department and planning director looked at this. You know, you're concerned about neighbor views. We have not heard from any about the neighbor views. And we've done a number of homes in C star. And most of them are actually are two stories, full two stories. There's a few homes that are eighteen feet, one story. So this is a ninety percent one-story home. With this with the unit above the the garage is the is accessory dwelling unit. So I just want to kind of give you a bit of history on that, and it will get you into the details. And then we'll be available for questions. I just wanted to kind of give you a little bit of heads up of where we're at today and why we're at here at this point. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Burge.
Thank you, Doug. Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Anna Mathioli from Burge Architects, and I am the applicant for this C D P application. Next slide. To provide you with a frame of a reference, our property is located approximately two thousand feet north of Pacific Coast Highway within the C star estate, which is a gated community of a nineteen residential property. The our property, the sixty-two eighty-two, it's not visible for from Pacific Coast Highway. Next slide, please. To give you a brief background of this project, which Doug already mentioned, the original approved C D P was for two-story, eighteen-feet-high, single-family residence. And it was approved by planning commission on October two thousand nineteen. Since then, there has been a change in ownership. A new property owners purchased the property in December twenty twenty, and at the beginning of twenty twenty-one, they came to us for some adjustment to the original plans and to improve the use of the exterior and interior space. As mentioned earlier, the only proposed changes associated with this amendment are to the high of some portions of the building, specifically on the northeast corner above the garage and on the southwest corner above the living room. This second floor plan shows the increased elevation of two feet and five inches to the second floor above the garage, including the lower deck with the elimination of the steps between the upper and lower roof deck. The parapet planters will be adjusted in height to forty-two inches per code. Next slide, please. Okay, so this roof plan shows the roof line affected by the proposed high increase. The roof above the two-story portion of the house above the garage will be raised six feet for a total high of twenty-four for flat roof. And to break the massing, the roof above the elevator will be one foot lower, so a maximum high of twenty-three feet. On the southwest corner above the living room, we are proposing to raise the southern portion of the roof for feet and six inches to align it with the northern portion of the living room roof. The maximum high here will be twenty-three feet and one inches as measured from natural grade or finished grade, whichever is lower. There is also an architectural element you can see on the left-hand side near the living room that we are proposing to raise one foot above the current roof line. Again, the intention was to break the massing of the roof line. On the basement, we are also proposing to increase the high of the windows to a maximum of three feet. Three feet by lowering the window seal. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is a three D view of the originally approved C D P that shows the house at eighteen feet maximum. The eighteen feet on the left-hand side is being measured from the natural grade or finished grade, whichever is lower. Next slide, please. This is a three D rendering, which was shown previously by Adam. Is the same three D view where we added in color the volumes that we are proposing to elevate. As you can see, the proportion of the house that we are proposing to raise is very minimal in relation to the overall volume of the massing of the house. Next slide. This is a three D that shows the final, the final elevation of of the proposed roof change. Next slide. This is one of the study we made to see if our proposed high increase will affect the view of the next door neighbors. We made this study by using a computer-generated model of the land form. On the upper part of the slide, you can see a site section from north to south cutting beyond the property lines, showing the properties located on the north at the top of the ascending slope at the elevation three hundred and ten feet and on and the property on the south, right at the bottom of the descending slope at elevation one nineteen feet. We simulate a view from the north property by standing on the ground and tracing a straight line at eye level as if we were looking toward the ocean. The bottom close-up depicted that this line of sight is not obstructed by our proposed high increase. Next slide. Then the next step was to search on the city database for primary view determination in record that could have been affected by our proposed high increase. We found that only three P V D reports from adjacent property that could have been of interest for our view study. Next slide. Of these three P V D, there are two properties in C star drive and one from a property accessing from Philip Avenue. Next slide. This map shows the angle of view of this P V D. From these three respective property, we noticed that only one of the property, the Philip Avenue property, had a visual angle looking over the sixty-two eighty-two property. Next slide. So we extrapolate from the P V D report of the Philip Avenue property the picture that is overlooking our property and use it to study any potential visual impact of the ocean or coastline. This picture was taken inside the primary living area of the dining room. Next slide. This is the same picture as before. We added the rendering of our proposed project, which is a circle with the yellow line. And as you can see, it's barely noticeable from this angle. The proposed project is partially hidden by the mature landscape along the property line. Also, the distance and elevation from where the P V D was taken are such that the project will be below the line of sight, similar to the line of sight north to south that we saw in the previous study. Next slide. This is just a comparison that shows before and after. Next slide. Lastly, we need some statistical analysis of the neighbors average house high. We initially considered to analyze only the properties within five hundred radius feet. But since the five hundred feet radius would not have been would not have included all the C star properties, which is the main neighbor, we expanded the study to one thousand feet radius to include all the star properties for the numbers. We collected data from the city database and from where there were no available, we just did a walk-through observation. For simplification, we included only property that are completed. Not those under construction, and we also excluded five properties to the southeast that are still beckoned after the Woolsey fire. So the the map on the left shows the location of the property differentiated with a color indicating three categories based on the number of story and high. The blue indicates a one-story building eighteen feet maximum. The yellow two-story twenty-four maximum for flat roof and the orange two-story twenty-eight maximum for a sloped roof. On the left, we have a two statistical calculation. The top legend indicates the percentage of each category of number of story and high. The majority, as you can see, of this neighborhood has houses twenty-four feet high and up to twenty-eight feet for combined total of approximately seventy percent. The bottom chart lists each individual property ordered by category of number of story and high. The average high of twenty-seven properties that we analyzed came out with twenty-four point five feet. Next slide. So our conclusion, our summary is that from all our studies on the impact, we found that our proposed roof high increase will have not the detrimental effect on the ocean or coastline views of the our neighbors. And also the proposed roof high will be in line with the majority of the neighbors' building high with an average of twenty-four feet and six inches. This conclude our presentation. Doug and I remain available for any question you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you. And I don't see any hands raised for further public comment.
Okay, great.
I actually, oh, never mind. That's Commissioner Hill.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so back to us. Commissioner Hill.
Yeah, further just I don't need to go first with questions, but just a quick disclosure, I forgot. Which was that I asked, why did we get these jumbo plans? And a concern I have is that if we want to start looking at plans, we're not going to really be able to do that in Zoom because at least I don't have space here to spread that out on my little desk with my computer and everything. I don't know if other people are in a similar spot, but if we have to look at plans, I don't know that we can adequately.
They're they are large. Vice Chair Maza.
I just want to start off with a couple of questions. Mostly to who's who's the planner again? Adam?
It's Adam.
Adam.
Yes.
Hey, Adam, does does the is this conditioned on the dark sky ordinance as far as having to shut off at a certain time of night and the exterior decks have to have lighting sensors and all that kind of stuff?
I guess part of it would be at the time of approval in the original resolution. Maybe Richard can weigh in on this of whether the dark sky ordinance was more or less in effect or being required through resolutions at that point in time. I'm not sure offhand. I'd have to take a look at the original resolution to see if that language is included in there.
The answer is yes.
It's 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 conditioned. Oh, sorry, Richard, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Pat. I'm sorry.
I believe it's condition twenty, but but you can you can correct me if I'm wrong.
And then also the dark skies ordinance. You know, it pertains to everything. There was no grandfathering provision, or if you were complete prior to a date type thing, all residential development will have to meet dark sky compliance.
Okay, second question. Craig mentioned that the fence came into the first hearing and he saw it not fixed at this point. Is that still included that they have to take down that fence or whatever it is? Maybe Craig, you could explain that.
The suggestion at the time in the hearing was to show that the fence is not enclosing the trail. And that they wanted some kind of demonstration of that.
So my question would be, that would be a requirement the developer made when he subdivided, so. I'm sure they cannot shut off the trail.
Vice Chair Maza, I see Anna has her hand up. Can you unmute her?
Ask her the question.
Mute mute. Well, I, yeah, I want to respond about the dark sky ordinance. Yes, we do have a plans that were submitted to the city with the substantial conformance, and they were approved. And regarding the fences, the fences are not part of this application, current application for the amendment.
Well, it's my understanding that they were part of the first one. Do we need to put something in here that makes this compliant with trail rules? And et cetera. And Jeff may know more about it because he was on the Trails Committee, but there is, that was a huge contentious item when C star states was set up. Do you have any comments, Jeff?
Yeah, it was back when the subdivision was created. And the sop to the Trails folks was that there would be this trail alignment along the edge of the property, but it's just an alignment. There is no trail. Odds are there never will be a trail. But it's just, you know, it's just an alignment. So I guess the issue is, are there any fences being put up on this property that are going to block off that hypothetical access to that hypothetical trail?
And if not, should we put them in there?
And it, oh, that's why I apologize. And if I'm wrong, Vice Chair Maza, is that not what condition seventeen speaks to? It says this permit does not approve any newer existing development obstructions within the area of the existing trail easement.
Well. Apparently, the prior one did. So this is changing that. That's already in there.
Doug has his hand up.
Doug Birch has his hand up.
Go ahead, Mr. Birch.
Yeah, any conditions that we had in the original, we're not asking to change those. It's interesting, you know, on this whole area, this is kind of upper C star. These are the last, I guess, is one other house higher than this. There are other properties within C star that definitely have a trail. There are other properties within C-Star that definitely have a trail. You know, it's kind of funny because I'm unaware of any kind of trail activity on this site, but if we need to comply with the fence or the trail alignment, Mr. Jennings had declared, then obviously we will do that as part of our original approval. We're not, we're not questioning that.
So Patrick, you say that that's in this, in this condition already, correct?
So what's going, I, 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 I would just point your attention to condition number seventeen. I believe it, I believe it addresses your point, but I don't want to speak for you, as I said before.
I, I definitely just covered it up.
Apologies. Yeah. So it, it just says this permit does not approve any new or existing development or obstructions within the area of the existing trail easement.
Okay, I think that's good. Now, the second question would be of Adam. One of the requirements when you have a dedicated trail is that you can't block the view from the trail. Does this property block the view above eighteen feet from that trail?
Can I ask a sort of preliminary question to that? Just to clarify, is there or is there not a legal easement for a trail here?
It's dedicated.
Yeah. It is dedicated. Okay. So when you're saying alignment and hypothetical, there is a legal easement dedicated. So, okay.
Yes, it is a legal easement dedicated, but the terrain is not flat and somebody has to spend the money to develop the trail. And nobody has ever done that. Nobody's ever figured out where the source of funds would be. And it's unlikely that a practical trail will ever be developed.
Okay, the easement's there. Okay.
The easement is there.
So my question of Adam is you get eighteen feet and then you can't block a trail view. Does this house block trail view?
Well, given the location of the trail on the property, it slopes upwards going above the topography of where the house would sit. So when on the trail, you would be well above the house on the upper portion of that trail. So I, from that point of view, when looking over the house, you should be able to see clearly over the house, the Pacific Ocean. And the trail is oriented in a way where you're kind of looking away from the house. So you're kind of looking straight at Pacific Ocean when looking south or the mountains when looking north.
That answers that. This is a question of, I guess, the architect or Doug. You're asking for three-foot windows in the basement. And basements can only daylight three feet. So are you telling me that the windows are going to be right up to the edge of the windows going to be dirt? It seems pretty strange. Do you want?
Can I answer that question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, it's like every basement that we've ever done in Malibu, the rule is very clear. You, it's measured from the ceiling. So if you have a nine-foot ceiling, you have a six-foot window sill. The dirt goes up to that window sill outside. That rule has never been changed. Previous plans that we had proved nineteen had a thirty-inch high window. So we're just lowering the cell. It's still the ceiling height. That's where it's measured from. That's where the code reads. Nothing changes. The dirt outside doesn't change or anything else, John. That's, that's basic basement window one-on-one is from, I, I, we interpret the code.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to picture it. You've got a three-foot window and a three-foot daylight. So where is there any room the bottom of the window to have anything but dirt?
Well, there is. The bottom of the window is a six-foot cell if you're standing in the basement and the dirt outside is, is right there at that point. It's a, that's the way the code reads. You're allowed to have a three-foot window max in any basement, and we've been doing our fair share of basements, and that's the way that we've been building them years. And that's the way all the basements are built that are legal.
Is the window thirty-six inches or is it six feet?
No, it's thirty-six inches high measured from the top is measured at the ceiling and then the cell would be, it's in this, in my example, it would be, you know, a six, six-foot high cell if you had a nine-foot ceiling. It's a three-foot high window. That's the maximum you're allowed to go.
I know it is. I'm just wondering what you do with the dirt outside. You just keep keeping it level so it doesn't show over the window?
Well, of course, it just starts at the window sill and then slopes down from there. It's in these particular cases, these particular windows are set back from the edge of, I think there's a walkway in the deck, so there, there's not any kind of waterproofing or other issues in this particular case.
So there's a walkway in front of the basement?
No, it's just the, on the floor above, on the floor above the basement, there's a, there's a master deck. And so there's, what I'm saying is that it's not flush to the wall outside. It's not a waterproofing or any issue. Dirt starts at the cell and just slopes back from there.
And is it, is it natural grade or is it piled up?
In that case, I think it might be natural grade because we're actually going underneath. But either way, the house is no higher at that one, where we have the basement windows, John, is that didn't change where we're asking to, for this application, that, that, that was originally approved. All we're asking for is to take advantage of this much light that we can gather, and that's what the code allows us to do.
Okay, then, last question. You have parapet planters. Adam, is there a limit on what can go in those planters? Because theoretically we're limited to twenty-four feet and you've got a forty-two inch planter. What happens if you put seven-foot bush in it or something?
A limit to the quantity or the, or strictly the height? I would assume that the engineering of the, the roof wouldn't be able to handle something quite that tall and heavy and anything like that would.
On a ficus bush, it can go fourteen feet and almost no dirt.
I, I'm not sure if there's a specific section in the code that would prohibit that within the planter, but my assumption is that they would want to keep their view from that area and having a tall plant around it would not allow them to have a view.
That's a good point. Hang on, Vice Chair. Anna, let Anna speak. Anna, go ahead.
I'll mute her.
Sorry. You are referring to the planter that are in the lower deck that we are raising. Those are forty-two inches, which is three feet and six inches, which is the minimum allowable for any garderail because their function will be garderail. And we are planning to plant a very low-high planting landscape, so very low-growth plant inside the planters, but their function is more like a parapet. At the same time, the aesthetics of having some planting there.
Okay, I understand that. Then my question of staff is if you're growing plants on a roof, do you have to follow the height of the building? It's part of the, part of the building. It's not in the ground. Do you have a limitation on how high that can be? Is it twenty-four feet? Or is it unlimited? Since this is actually a planter on a roof, it's the same as, say, you want to throw a bunch of deck chairs up there and umbrellas. We limit those all the time. So my question is, do you limit how high plantings on a roof can be under our limitation of how tall a house can be? Knowing that this is not planted in the ground.
We could certainly add a condition to specifically speak to that. Saying that any, any planting can't go above the twenty-four feet roof line.
And there is a condition on the project originally that talks about vegetation cannot obstruct, obstruct primary views from other structures. So that, that's our typical language, but as Adam mentioned, if it's the commission's will, there could be something specific called out for those planters as a condition. It has been done before.
Okay, great. Okay, I'll let Craig go.
Right, Commissioner Hill. You're muted.
Yeah, okay, thank you. A couple of concerns, sort of point towards the roof deck, but starting with the extra height. It sort of enables and motivates the roof deck. On the, the trail, we have to treat it as an actual trail. It's a legal easement. And unfortunately, the view determinations haven't really addressed that. The, the staff report did analyze it and say that there'll be no impacts to the trail as a result of the project because the proposed height increase does not impede access to the trail, but that's not the issue really. It's implicitly there are view impacts and then at page ten, it says that the topography along the trail will allow for views over the structure on the northern portion of the trail, and I think we can infer that there would be some view impact on, on all but the northern portion of the trail. So that's, that's an issue there. And then I think if it were maybe just the structure, we, we might live with it, but the problem is then that extra height increase motivates the roof deck, which to me is anything but a substantial conformance issue that was supposedly done earlier this year. You know, just a few months ago, earlier this year, sometime in, in C-Star, we had neighbors talked out of a rooftop deck as being inappropriate for the neighborhood and or the environment. And here they want the deck right near a public trail. It's also right near the open space easement on the upper one-third of the parcel. So I, I think there are substantial noise issues if we're allowing that as a, any sort of socializing space. I'm, I'm just not comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with the notion of putting it through as a substantial conformance administrative thing. I think this and, and the fact that it was not called out at all in the staff report or in the public noticing, that's, that's a problem. So I, 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 you know, I could, I could probably make a motion and say, let's approve this without the rooftop deck. But I don't know that, that anybody would be happy with that.
Okay, I'll take a second here. The rooftop deck, that, that's on an eighty thousand square foot lot. Those people aren't going to bother anybody. Number two.
A ten feet from the trail.
Hang on, you could treat the trail like a trail if it was a trail. It's not a trail. So if the trail was there before the house came, a real trail, then you would have that, that call would be great. You'd have something to talk about. Right now, you don't because it's not a trail. You can't call something that's, that you can't walk on a trail. So I don't believe that has any bearing on where the house is. The roof deck, like I said, not going to bother anybody. This thing is huge lot. We should all be so lucky. And I, I think it's a great house. You know, the original approval that we all watched went through. They've added a couple of things because between Anna and Mr. Birch, they've decided that raising the kitchen area and the living area, and it would be a, a better home and we would all like that. So that's, that's where I am on this. Commissioner Jennings.
Wasn't the roof deck approved as part of the substantial conformance review that the, the city did?
In, in early twenty, early this year.
So the roof deck was on the plans that went to the last planning commission in front of the, the proposed ADU. And then there was a substantial conformance and Adam, correct me if I misspeak here, where it looks like that roof deck was expanded, I guess, to the property to the right and left of, of the ADU door, correct? Am I saying that right?
Yeah, that's correct. When looking at the, the roof plan.
Well, the, the, the roof deck couldn't have served that second unit because the second unit wasn't tall enough yet. So there could have been a window that looked out on a piece of roof, but it was not an egress from the second unit.
There was no way to access the roof deck?
In my understanding, and it was never, it was never discussed or called out. It wasn't in the staff report, anything. We, we never even came up. I just.
And perhaps Doug Birch can help with this. What I noticed in the plans that were attached as part of the staff report was an area as I mentioned, parallel in front of the, the second unit there, the ADU that was called out as a roof deck.
Earlier this year.
Yeah.
In the plans twenty nineteen.
Can I, can I speak? The, the original plans always had a little roof of Craig, Commissioner Hill. You came up set of stairs. The only difference is, is that we're asking for a slight increase in that roof deck, just based on the owner's request. So there always was a roof deck. It just was, again, there was an eighteen-foot high unit that was always the second story unit. The same size unit, same square footage. So now just a little, little more, a little bigger roof deck. And this is just for this unit. It's not for the general house, not saying anybody can go up there, but that's the clarification. It always was in the original approval.
I, I would have to differ. We, we're just shown a slide showing that the steps were added as of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, the steps were, it was a, it was a, the steps now that we're all at twenty-four feet because now we can have one level coming out of there. We can go outside and have a single level roof deck. So that's, that's why that's changed. It's a sectional thing.
If, if, if I could get the floor back, my question was directed because I was curious as to whether the roof deck was even part of this application, and that's why I asked the question. And it also, didn't I read in the staff report that this application, this, this amendment has been approved by the homeowners association? C-Star homeowners association, is that not correct? Did I, am I fantasizing about that?
That's correct, and their approval letter should be part of the application package.
Okay, so not, not that it's determinative about anything, but just because we have had C-Star issues where the neighbors were upset. Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Just as a matter of interest, the Malibu West and C-Star Estates homeowners associations have a review process for both. They're supposed to have each other look at it. For some reason, I assume it's lighting. Another point to be made is the trail is a trail. It's dedicated and we, as a planning commission, when we approved the house at the entrance of C-Star about a year and a half ago, required the applicant to maintain the entrance to the trail and to move back from it. Okay, so we've already acted on that. So there's aren't any other questions. I, I'd like to move approval, approval with staff's recommendation with one amendment, and that is that the structure, including plantings, plantings, not, not plantings outside of the structure, but including the structure be maximized to twenty-four feet. And that's my motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Now, let me just explain the reason why I said the twenty-four feet is because every time we've come across a roof deck, especially on the ocean where we have projections sticking up from it, we've always done that. We've always made it people count the rail and take down the umbrellas and whatever it is. So that's not an unusual requirement by us.
Okay, you've got, you've got a second, Vice Chair. Okay, Recording Secretary Evans, you want to take a roll call?
Hang on, hang on. Just, just a comment. To say that the trail doesn't exist, it is a legal easement. If anybody wanted to walk through there now, however steep or difficult it might be, they have the right to do that. So you, you know, we're, we're talking about a roof deck right near a public trail and we're giving it short shrift, in my opinion.
But, 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 all right. I mean, it's, it's ten fifteen, and so I'm, I'm going to expend a little energy here. The, the, the staff has already told you that the, the level of the trail where you're walking is up above, and you can look at the, at, at the topo, that's sitting there on three of twelve. The trail is very far above the height of the house. And so when you're looking over the trail, I mean, you, you're talking about something that's going to interfere with, the, the rule is you can't interfere with the, the scenic values from the trail, but there's no indication that this house will do that. You're just making it up.
No, in the staff report, they said it only in the there, there would, they implied, the way they phrase it, there would be view impacts to the trail and all but the northern portion of the trail. The trail comes down with like twenty feet of this deck and upper extra structure. So there is interaction.
I don't see it as, well, there's interaction because what? You could see, what is, what, what, what view is being blocked then from, you know?
You're, well, you'd be blocking some ocean, some of the visually some of the visually impressive views of Trancas area. And, and beyond that, we have concerns about noise and about environment and privacy too. I mean, and it goes both ways too. Maybe these people don't want to be, have their privacy invaded from their rooftop deck with people tromping by on the trail. I don't know.
Okay, that's, we're there. Okay, do we have, we have a second.
Would you like me to call the question?
Please.
Okay. Going back to try to remember who did what.
Vice Chair Mazza. Jeff seconded it.
Yeah, Vice Chair Mazza.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
No.
Commissioner Wetton.
Oh, he was muted, but I think he's.
Sorry about that. Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I move we adjourn. Oh, no, no, we have a report.
Sorry about that.
So if you'd like, we could move forward to seven A.
Doug Birch killed a tree.
Dennis, are you muted?
No, I am not. Okay, we are on.
Oh, excuse me.
Presentation on update on Planning Department continued from October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Recommend action, receive staff's presentation. And we have a nice presentation by Ms. Salazar.
Good evening, Chair Smith and members of the Planning Commission. Again, my name is Patricia Salazar, the Development and Operations Manager for the Planning Department. And we're going to give you a brief, very brief presentation tonight. If we could skip to slide, let's see, six, please. Can I have the slide before, please? Parker? One more, it's got several squares. There we go. As you can see at the beginning of the budget hearing, the Planning Department proposed several improvement measures. We have an operations division that we've created this fiscal year. We've done the online application submittals. We've completed that. We've created a submittal team, and we're continuing to do interdepartmental coordination. So those are some improvement measures that we proposed. This is not a comprehensive list, just some that we proposed and we're working on. If I can have the next slide. So in order to, one of the big ideas that we had was to overhaul our operations. And to do that, we know we have to make some really big changes. We know by just doing some incremental things, we're not going to overhaul our department with the planning submittal process. So even though we've made significant progress with some smaller items, we have some big picture items that we're taking care of now. For example, we're obtaining a development services review consultant. That individual or the firm, they'll be reviewing our develop, our process from start to finish with all the departments. They'll be looking at work culture. They'll be holding workshops with stakeholders to get everyone's input. They'll be comparing our development review process with other jurisdictions. This item is on the November twenty-eighth City Council meeting. The other item that we're tackling is a land management system, otherwise known as permitting software, where you could submit, let's say, e-plan review. You'll be able to see your project online with the public interface, find out what next steps you're going to take. So this is a really big ticket item, technology wise, to set us up for, to succeed. And we're currently reviewing proposals for that. The other ticket item, big one, is also on November twenty eighth, the City Council will be reviewing a proposal to increase the contract planner budget. What we're proposing is additional budget to give us about, we want to say the equivalent of five full-time contract planners, even though it's thirteen planners, it'll be the equivalent of five full-time staff members. So we have an unprecedented backlog of pending applications. This does not count all of our applications that are under compliance review post decision. So this is really critical to really stop, help, to stop help the bleeding, right? Just to get us back on track. And then, of course, we're still doing our full-time staff recruitment. We currently have five vacancies at this time. So even though we've made small improvements and we're working on those items, here are the big items that's going to give us long-lasting, long-term changes. If I can have the next slide. So we're really excited that we launched an online planning portal back, want to say at the end of September. So in, just to, just to give you context, twenty eighteen, we were making a lot of progress in planning with some of our submittal processes. Then the fire occurred. We have, we had to pivot. We had to figure out how to, you know, get those projects through. We were still doing person-to-person interface at the counter. We were taking in digital records and hard copy records, but it was all face-to-face. A year and a half later, after the fire, COVID occurred. We were undoubtedly very unprepared for COVID. We had to go digital. In the four years since COVID, more or less, right? We have changed the process multiple times. And it's been very confusing for our applicants. It's been very confusing for staff. We've had staff turnover. So with that, we're really excited that we were able to launch an online submittal portal that I feel addresses a lot of the applicant's concerns. You don't need an appointment. We have a lot of complaints about people saying, I can't get an appointment for a month out to submit, so no appointment. Now we could take everything digitally. Now you could do everything with a digital payment. You could still pay with check, but if you want to pay with credit card, you could do so without leaving your home. Our submittal administrator, she provides standardized responses, and also many of her emails will have standardized next step. After this, you could pay your credit card within this time. Then your application will be assigned. So you now know what to expect in the process. People can expect very quick turnarounds, even though you're not coming to City Hall to submit your planning application. You're not leaving your home. You're not coming to City Hall, but yet you're going to get a response within twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours. There will always be those projects that take over a week because they're complicated, et cetera. But again, people don't have to come to City Hall for our new online portal. And then I think most people really do appreciate, and we've received a lot of positive feedback. When you submit to the portal, you are no longer dealing with four, six different staff members. You're dealing with one staff member that is facilitating the process. You don't have to re-explain yourself again and again, unfortunately. So can I have the next slide? So with this planning online submittal portal, you can obtain your submittal checklist. So for example, the, there's a lot of people watching applicants, architects. They would go to City Hall throughout the week. They would have to check in with every department, find out what documents were required for a certain type of application and the fees. We streamlined it. Planning now fills out that document on behalf of all of the departments. It's been a great effort with ESD and Public Works that we could do this for you. So now the applicants don't have to come to City Hall and spend hours talking to each department. Now, sometimes we may not have sufficient information, so we'll ask you to fill out a pre-submittal questionnaire. Again, you could do this in the portal. You initiate, hey, I want to do a new application. You press that. The other thing you could do is I'm responding to city comments. I need to submit revised plans. I need to resubmit to biology. You could also go on the portal and select revised submittal. You can also request to submit a substantial conformance. Now, one thing that gets people a little bit confused is they say, well, I went on the portal, but I can't upload my documents. Well, what we'd like to do right now is to screen people's request. And once we screen the request, the submittal administrator will provide a link. Then you can upload your documents. Once we have all your documents, we make sure everything's there. Then we'll ask you for payment. Next slide, please. We've also established, and made it very clear for folks of how to submit. Again, we still have the option. Well, one, we have where some things have to be submitted in person. Those are appeals and event permits. Those are very timely. We need a date stamp on those, and we need to hit the ground running when we get those. So we want people to come in. The other one is, look, you can submit in person or online. Some people just have a preference to come in person, but we're keeping those down to the minor applications, where if you want a one-stop shop and you want to come in and do your over-the-counter outdoor lighting, and you want to, you know, give digital records to someone, make your payment right then and there, we'll take those in during public counter hours. Or you don't want to leave your home, your office, you could submit online. And then for the larger applications, we do require that major applications are submitted online. And then I believe there's two things not on this slide, time extensions. We'll, we'll take those via M-planning anytime, followed up by payment. And then the other one that's not on this slide are wireless permits. Those do require an appointment. And that's coordinated through M-planning. So we haven't had too many issues. People have, I believe, clear instructions now when to submit, how to submit. I think a lot of people have been really happy that we got rid of the, the appointment, virtual appointment scheduler. They weren't able to get appointments. The public counter is a lot more manageable. So this has been great. So the next slide, please. So I talked about other, so just a few other improvements. So we, I talked about the submittal checklist where we now, planning will determine all the documents required for an application and the fees. And of course, there's always going to be some nuances, not, projects in Malibu are very, very unique. And we know that. And then one of the other changes that we made in conjunction with ESD, with Yolanda, is we offer express, express plan reviews for tenant improvements, very specific. You could come to City Hall, and this is commercial, I should add. You could come to City Hall, meet with the planner, meet with the building official or a plan checker, and you could get everything done from start to finish. If that tenant improvement requires a planning clearance, we could get that done on the spot. So we also have that. Next slide, please. We've also reestablished Woolsey Fire Counter Hours. Even though our fire rebuild contract planner Akash is pretty much always available for members of the public, we reestablished these hours just so people know they could come in Tuesday and Thursday, nine to twelve, walk in, ask questions, anything during those hours. So that's been wonderful. And he's at that little kiosk in the lobby. And in conjunction with all these other things, we've created a step-by-step submittal guide, so everybody knows what to expect in the process. Next slide. And those, that pretty much wraps up a lot of the improvements we've made in the last five months. We have a lot more coming, such as review cycles. So we eliminate extra fees, extra reviews. We have a lot more things coming that we're going to put online. Part of the November twenty-eighth staff report to City Council is, Councilmember Yuri was really interested in, if we're going to make a recommendation to provide more funding for contract planners, what do we get out of this? So we're creating baseline metrics. And then we're going to start measuring if, you know, if we're getting our money's worth, you know, with all these contract planners and to see progress in the Planning Department. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Yes, that was wonderful. Thank you, Patricia. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go last. Commissioner Jennings.
Yeah, thank you, Patricia. All good news. The first part about the consultants and this and that and the other thing, this is something that has been a problem for me for years and years and years. Yeah, Malibu was kind of unique, but not really that much. And I've never understood why we felt we had to reinvent the wheel ourselves. There are, how many thousands of planning departments, I mean, in, in California and the ones that are in the coastal zone? And just why we can't just go to them and say, how do you do it? You know, and, and pick their brains. But that, that's the first part of it. The second part is, okay, we've now got electronic submission. One of the complaints that has existed for a long time is that you had to submit to planning, and then you had to rotate your plans through all the other departments. And anytime any department suggested a change, you had to go back and you had to do them all over again. Is the electronic submission going to eliminate that process? Are you going to automatically route these plans from department to department so that, that, that the staff will basically take care of that problem? Or is it going to be where we submit, and then it gets bounced back, and then we have to submit to somebody else and then submit to somebody else? That's, that's my next question. And I'll, let me just finish the last one, and then I'll let you respond. The, the final issue is coordination with building and safety. And I guess it's the same question there. Are, a, a lot of the complaints that I hear are that, I won't mention any names, but that one of the, some of the departments are very difficult to get in touch with, that they're only available just a very few hours of the, of the week. And it's a problem trying to rotate stuff through them, sometimes because it's difficult to get an appointment, sometimes because it just takes a long time for them to process the plan. So does, is any of this, what that you've said tonight alleviate any of the problems that people have experienced in dealing with building and safety? Those are my three points.
Okay. So one thing about the other jurisdictions, that's a really good point, because whenever we hire someone new, whether it's from Santa Barbara, Laguna Beach, or another coastal city, we're always picking everybody's brains about how you do things. And we want to change our process to make it easier for folks. And so we don't want to recreate the wheel, but we do have unique circumstances. And we've, and, and Richard can add to this, but I really feel that obtaining this development review consultant is really going to help look at all three departments, Public Works, ESD, and Planning, find all the kinks and where we're making things very difficult, because it's like institutional that we've been doing things. Maybe it's in the code, why we can't get rid of a certain procedure. So we're really hoping that that's going to assist us in eliminating a lot of these roadblocks. It is frustrating, because we know other cities do this, and we haven't been able to achieve a certain level of efficiency that we would like to see. As for routing for planning, we are the intake, the, the Planning Department, we intake plans and revise the middles on behalf of the other departments. So we kind of act as a manager, and we do all the routing. And the, the other departments now, it may seem bureaucratic for, let's say, our city biologist to say, please, you know, submit this through the portal. However, if you go through the portal, you will, your plans won't get lost, your request won't get lost. It sounds like it's going to take a little bit more time, but it's actually saving you time. And that way, we're routing things, we're tracking things, we have a paper trail, because that was one of our biggest issues during COVID. You know, we were operating with Outlook. So, and we're hoping slowly to make the same changes with building safety. But again, I think the, the, getting the consultant to look at all three departments and interviewing members of the public is really going to help. I hope that answers your questions.
Yes, I think so. But, so the, the idea is that at least for, as far as planning is concerned, you will route the plans through all the departments, and there, there won't be any necessary back and forth between the, between the applicant and the various departments, right?
You will receive emails from the departments with their reviews. You are, some applicants love having direct correspondence with. You are, some applicants love having direct correspondence with the departments, some folks don't. So of course, there's always that line of communication open. But we basically coordinate your application seminal on your behalf. Through the planning conformance.
And, and if some department says, no, I want this change. Does that mean you will handle circulating it back through everybody else? Or is that going to be on the applicant?
No, we will, we have been doing that. We have been meeting with all the departments and one thing that's very critical, and I know it's hard for some applicants to understand this. Is we want to make sure that every department has the most recent set of plans. Even if it's. You know, something about S show or this or that, we know. That may change something in public works that may change something in geology. And so. We may route those plans as more of an F Y I to the other departments. But we want to make sure that everybody has the same date stamp plans. So especially when Richard's sitting up here for planning commission. He, he can say with certainty that the other departments have reviewed the most recent set of plans. But we will do that on an applicant's behalf.
Thank you.
Was that me?
Yes.
Yeah, you'll, you'll be happy to hear that three of my four questions were exactly what Jeff just asked, so. My, and my fourth is just, I don't know if this is a new thought or just confirming what you already are doing, but. On the website. Right around where the portal opens up. To have some really clear flow chart of, of potential outcomes. And, and so whatever people's path is and whatever they want. They can, they can phrase from beginning to end what to expect. And I say this, having gone through a couple bureaucratic processes on websites recently where. It's maybe the simplest example is an online survey or whatever, where you never know how close you are to the end. Cause you have to go screen by screen by screen. And so to really make it clear to people. What they're getting through. This is where you submit in the portal and then this happens and then this happens and. Maybe it's like a decision tree or a flow chart because there are so many different potential outcomes.
So that's, that's an excellent comment. I know. Thousand Oaks, they just released their permitting software. And one thing folks can do is they could log in, see their application and it tells them. The, the workflow, for example, for us. A C D P versus an A C D P versus an O C and A P R, we have, we have over twenty, twenty-five, thirty application types. And paths and that would be excellent. And we really want to help people understand. Where they're going in the process.
Good, great. Thank you.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Yeah, the first question is. We're not considering writing our own software. I'm chairman of a public software company and. That's a major mistake, major mistake, especially on maintenance, but I'd like you to answer that. The other thing I would like. We're gonna have all these contract planners. And we've got a couple now, and I find as a planning commissioner, I can't get a hold of any of them. Especially on a week of approval, because they don't use, they don't have emails at the city. They don't have phone numbers we're given. If I put A Shaw at Malibu City dot org, I get a rejection. So. I don't know if you want to talk to the planner, but at least the, the commissioner that comes up to them. Have to have some way to talk to the planner and ask questions. Now. The other question is why you would be using credit cards and who pays the fee? Since there's all these electronic payment systems like Vemo, where you don't have the fees. And when you charge a $5,000. $5,000 ticket on your credit card, somebody's paying. Two hundred fifty bucks. To the credit card company. So is there. Land another system to, to these payments?
Venmo, PayPal.
Yeah, all kinds. Well, PayPal, you still gotta pay the credit card company. The city's gotta pay. And then the real question I get from a lot of people is. Where do I stand? I've been doing this for years and I don't know if I'm anywhere near the top of the pile. And so is there a system to track? How far, how far you are completed and where you stand in the pile? Now that may change. Dynamically as things go by, but. People get frustrated. Thinking, gee, I've been doing this for so long and my neighbor down there just finished his house. How did he get to the top of the pile? And. It can be, it can be an index, it can be something, but. The applicant should see somehow. Whether it were, whether, how long it is, maybe an estimated time to get to the top of the pile if you don't screw up. Something like that would be. Very valuable. And. Then of course, with any software system, and that's why I'm recommending you go hire one that's used by other people. You, you'll always have to. Answer questions and. Stay have standardized questions in your software and standardized procedures and. You're not changing them all the time because we had some planning commission meeting. And decided you do a neighborhood this way instead of that way. So, but my real only question I need you to answer is, is. Are we? And the reason why I'm. A little bit skeptical about this is about eight years ago, we paid three hundred grand to rewrite an invisible code. And it came back with a big zero, got thrown in the trash can. So are we going to use standardized system or are we going to try to invent the wheel?
So I want to, if you don't mind, I'm going to answer the question about the consultants. If we have all of the consultants emails and phone numbers. On the city's website. Malibu City dot org forward slash contact us. Many of them do not have a city email address, but their email addresses are there. And their phone numbers are there. So we, because we've heard people and we changed policies where we stopped giving email addresses, city. Email addresses to consultants, we've switched over, but all of that information is now on the staff directory online.
So if you wanted to find. Shaw's. Email, I could find it online?
Yes, forward slash contact us. And then you select planning department. And his information should be right there.
Okay.
If he's not, I'll double check. I know he's under fire rebuild team, but I'll make sure he has his own contact, but I know. Our recently hired consultants, they're all there, but I'll double check Akash just in case.
Once we start getting them that we, this planted, planning issues, we can get that. Address at least during the week of review.
Yeah. And then as for the credit cards, thank you for the comment. We'll make sure to. Go over that. In the city, we are looking to. Obtain permitting software through a third party. The city, we've had our own permitting software database for the last 20 years. We've outgrown it. But we are able to collect a lot of information today, such as the status reports that you might be. Looking for. I know one of the reports that a lot of people want to see is. They have a difficult time tracking the departments. Who has reviewed my project, which one is pending? So we're looking to publish those reports online in a live database. We can actually do that today. We just need a little bit of time. And some other reports where all of our projects stand. So those are things that we can actually do today.
I can interject that I just looked on the, the website and there, the. Shaw is on there as well as a number of other contract.
Okay, I wish somebody told me. Just so you know, the, the company I run is. Database management company. And you can take any database nowadays. We did one hospital that is integrating. Seventeen other hospitals, patient databases, all different. It's easy to do nowadays and the old days it was impossible.
Now, we're, we're looking forward to all the bells and whistles without losing substance. Some of our current functions that are wonderful, such as our noticing. So we're looking, really looking forward to the process and I think. By working with the development review consultant, we're going to be able to fine tune some of our workflows. So implementing a development permitting software. Will be easier for the department compared to when we tried over 10 years ago.
Great.
Commissioner Wetton?
I'm good.
Okay, let me, can I just ask one last thing? We have. Answers to a lot of questions in our, in our. Implementation manuals and everything. And it'd be very. Helpful for the. Public when they're coming in, bringing things in. Like I got a call from an outside architect out of the city. On how do you do minor modifications? Well, I'm not going to sit down there and. Write a memo on how you do it. I told him what section of the code it was in. But if you could just have a series of frequently asked questions. It would probably take a lot of work off of you.
Yeah, we're looking forward to developing a lot more questionnaires online to help folks. One of my favorite. Is an applicant suggested we. Create the TDSF calculator tool online. We have no problem releasing that information to folks, our conformance review sheets, we can make those into tools online. So. The more information we give to applicants, the better. So.
Great. And all it takes is money, right? So all you gotta do is get money out of city council.
And it takes some money. Patricia, how many of you guys worked on this? How many people did it take for what the presentation you just showed us? To come up with all that? How many of you? In the office? Were working on that?
Um. Well, I did the presentation, but I'm a one woman show, but I work with our I T folks. Alex and Parker in the background for everything that's online. I'll work with our current software developer. To help integrate our development database with the online. Then it, we have to train six for planning techs. To know how to do this process with messaging, information getting out to folks. I'm sure I work very closely with Tyler. Tyler and I work with our planning techs. He's our planning guru with the planning techs. I come in with the procedures. So it's a real team effort. But we definitely have the in-house knowledge, institutional knowledge to do a lot of these things, but yeah. I'm really proud of what we've accomplished in five months as a group and so, yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was just thinking because. You know what's probably lacking? This is what we've always wanted to do. You, obviously you talk with, with the guy over to your right on the screen. And I'm sure you put together, talked to a number of people that you guys all been around long enough. So that's good. That's, that's great. Do you feel like? There's a eady bit of light at the end of that tunnel?
I think so. I think we definitely have a lot of interest to make these changes. We're getting a lot of support from applicants, from owners. From the council members. We had a recent A and F meeting. During our budget meetings, we talked about reorganizing the department. You know, whether it was Joyce, former director Joyce or Bonnie Blue or Richard, we've always talked about a staffing plan. You could have all these amazing improvement measures, but if you, you don't have the staffing to make it happen. We've always tossed around a magic number of 25 to 30 cases per planner. We've always seen with consultants, the minute you start giving them more than 25 cases, the efficiency. Starts going downhill. You know, so we have a lot of support these days and we really appreciate it.
The contract planners, um, obviously we've had. Some that know, have known the code, they were there a long time, they've gone to other jurisdictions. I don't know if you've tried to rob them or not, you're just gonna have to pay the hell out of them. Somehow, I think, I think, uh, cause that always works. I don't know if you steal them by paying them. They had to help with staff reports and, and to go to all this, maybe they come in and they help train, they help keep whatever, just. That's just a thought I have.
And we're. I was just going to say, we're very fortunate that. Based on the complexity of Malibu projects. Not only the code, but legislative commission hearing, city council. We really have to weed through all of the applications for even consultants, so. I think we have, I want to say three or four former directors and managers that are consultants. And so we're fortunate that this time around, we've been able to attract very, very highly qualified individuals. To be our consultants.
Are we getting Justine back?
I'm trying.
We try. I don't know.
I try every time I see her.
Just take, just take money. The other thing is you're talking about hiring a consultant, am I correct? To oversee this whole program? Type of thing?
Yes, the development review consultant.
Okay, so let me ask you something and this isn't to be mean, but I'm gonna ask it. Isn't this what the city manager should be doing? Isn't he supposed to have a overlay of what, what's going on and he would come in to you? You and Richard, so to speak, and go, I, this is what I see, that, 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 should we be heading that direction? Or you tell him, this is what we've done. I, I just, I'm just. Not that I'm saying the consultant is bad, I'm just asking, is that not what the city manager is supposed to do? Keeping an eye on. Not that he has anything else to do, but keep an eye on this situation.
So I'll let Richard add to that, but I do know this has been spearheaded by the city manager's office, which has been very nice. They've taken this off of our shoulder. Look, we'll take care of it, this. As well as the land management program. So we didn't have to do that. So that's been wonderful. And city manager McClary, he's been really hands on with us, asking us constantly what we need. How we can make ourselves more productive, efficient. So he's been hands on and he's been terrific with giving us a lot of. Ideas of how to carry things through the process.
Great to hear.
Yes, so the. The consultants, the. Assistant city manager, am I saying that correct? Joseph Jones. He is the one who put together the R F P. I got it out there, coordinated the interviews for all of us. And of course he's doing this at the direction of city manager McClary. But they have taken this on and part of the reason for getting a consultant in there is that. You know, at the end of the day, this is going to be presented to the city council and. These folks are going to look at everything. They're going to look at how staff works. They're going to look at how the decision makers. Work with staff and how they conduct reviews in, you know, it's going to be a, my understanding is they're going to look at everything. And the idea of having a consultant. Is that it brings in an outside opinion. To present to the city council on what's being done right and what's being done wrong. So it's, it's kind of, all of us go under the gun, I guess you could say, but that's why.
Okay, our Commissioner Jennings, did you have another question or? Okay, Vice Chair Mazza, I guess, real quick.
Yeah, real quick. We have the dark sky ordinance and. Pesticide ordinance and all that stuff coming up. Is there any plan at all to automate? Code compliance complaints or does everybody still have to come in and do this and that and the other thing? Cause I would assume that. Would simplify. If you get 500. Dark sky complaints. What are you gonna do unless you can do it automatically? Is that even under consideration?
These folks will be looking at. All the things I believe that will be part of it. I, I can look more into it, but it'd be the interaction. Of how. We are. Taking those in and looking at them and then also our new software. Correct, Patricia? I mean, that, that's also part of it is track. Code enforcement, the progress, the completion, all that's tracked through our database. So that'll have to be integrated into the, the new database.
Hey, do you have, you don't have a. A software. Hey, do you have, you don't have a, like, a software program determined?
No, I think Patricia, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're at the point where they're wrapping up. The, we hired a consultant to guide us through the obtaining and implementation of software. I believe that consultant is, are they wrapping up the RFP so we could get it out for the various software vendors? Are we at that stage? Because we've had a lot of interviews.
I want to say we're getting ready for interviews. I want to say we've, I, actually Alex is in the background. He might have an update for us. Alex, are you available? Or did he check out? But we're, we're definitely deep in the process at this point. We're, we'll be selecting someone shortly.
Okay, I think, I think we've had a pretty good evening. And what do you guys, well, Commissioner, Vice Chair Mazza?
I'm with you. May, may I just ask, we did not actually open public comment for the, this item. And we do have a public speaker who said his hand raised.
This is just a presentation, right?
Patricia?
Patrick?
Yeah, I can't recall, Director Mollick, do we usually put presentations on a new business? Is that the typical title?
That's correct.
Yeah, then if it's, if there's no action and that's typically how, how it's done, there's, there, there's no need to take public comment. Of course, if the chair was so inclined.
I, I think, I think this was planning night, so we're gonna, I think we leave it at that.
Okay.
My motion stands.
Second. Thanks, Patricia.
Part of the motion is happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes, good night, everyone.
Commissioner Jennings?
You already checked out.
Chair Smith?
Oh, yes.
Motion carries, CR, George.
Aloha.
Good night, everybody.
Have a great holiday.
Thank you.